All right, it is Monday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two at four thirty P. M. Actually, four thirty-one P. M. We're in a city hall work session room. As authorized by section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in the course of executive session for the purpose of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any agenda I hear. The city of Rallett reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign regular session or call the executive session or order business at any time during the term. Processing public input, all forms, blah, 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 blah. For in-person comments, registration, form instructions are available inside the building right outside these doors. And I'll go ahead and we have public's input. I have a few cards here. You'll have three minutes each, and this timer is right there. So our first commenter is Janine Langford. And just state your name or your...
Janine Langford.
City of Rallett.
City of Rallett, oh, oh, Rallett, since nineteen eighty-five. Can you please stand up and come to the edge of the table so we can hear you?
Okay.
But that makes me... With the same right here.
You're my friend.
I'll protect you.
Okay, so what else did you want me to say?
You have three minutes, you say whatever you want to say.
Oh, okay. So I've been a citizen since nineteen eighty-five. I've been a volunteer with Friends of the Rallett Animal Shelter for fifteen years. I'm the oldest one there in all possible ways. Today, I've got a couple of concerns about the proposed budget items. One is for the Rallett Animal Shelter to help with employee morale. Also, there's one that we just have about the animals in general. I'm representing Friends of the Rallett Animal Shelter. I wrote it down so I don't go off on tangents. The shelter doesn't have a budget to feed the animals. We rely on citizen donations, and sometimes that's touch and go. Dogs get upset stomachs if food isn't consistent, which causes a whole other set of problems, like having enough staff to clean up after all of them. We are trying to feed a decent quality dog food, Purina One. It's not top of the line, but it's a decent good food. If this is consistently given, it cuts down on stomach upset. It costs approximately fifteen thousand dollars a year to feed the dogs, and an estimate to feed the cats is about ten thousand dollars a year, which is including litter. We respectfully ask the city to provide the funds to feed our animals. Frost is making an offer to administer the food purchasing from city funds and to provide storage for the food. Also, and this is icing on the cake, it would be a beautiful gesture on your part, if you would fund quarterly pest control for the shelter to take care of our foot-long public health issues. It is animal control, and these are the animals we'd like to see controlled. They're freaking everyone out. Two thousand should take care of that. And now, the second thing that I wanted to get into, switching gears a little bit, is the budget proposal to change the shelter hours from, or days, from five days to six days a week. Our organization is concerned about the new proposed schedule for the shelter to be open five days a week instead of six days a week for a number of reasons. After-hours P. D. cannot be relied on to pick up stray dogs and bring them to the shelter. They're busy. On many occasions, the finder, including our president, Michelle, is told to hold on to the dog until the shelter opens. If the shelter is closed the next day, the finders don't normally have a place to shelter them. That's how it is now. If the new proposed schedule to close the shelter to the public Sunday and Monday is approved, then the finder will have to hold on to them even longer. And that doesn't seem like a very good customer-friendly thing to do. Our citizens should be applauded for keeping a dog away from potential danger instead of being asked to take care of the found dog. Being closed two days in a row will exacerbate the problem. And I know you all know our shelter is at capacity and is running full consistently. Providing the animals only five days to be seen and adopted seems counterproductive at this point. We need to get the animals out to rescues and adopters. We have volunteers at the shelter seven days a week. We're doing all we can do, but we're not able to process adoption and rescues. We already have issues with the current hours and the public not being to access the shelter with enough hours. If we go to, that's called six days a week. If we go to five days a week, it's going to be worse. However, if the shelter is determined to move from six days a week to five days a week, could you all possibly consider Sundays and Mondays being closed to the public instead of Sundays, I mean, Sundays and Wednesdays, instead of Sundays and Mondays? That way, we wouldn't have the shelter closed two days in a row, and we wouldn't have the problem of citizens having to hold on to an animal they happen to find. It seems odd. Okay. Another thing, according to morale, to help morale with the staff, we love the ACOs over there. Mornings are often slow as citizen traffic is concerned. With that in mind, we would like to offer suggestions on hours that we think would work well for citizens and staff, and see what you think. Just picture this, Monday through Friday, twelve to six, ten to four on Saturdays. Ten to four o'clock on Saturdays is when things are dead. We don't get many people coming in. Just something for y'all to think about. Finally, to help morale, citizen general information calls take a lot of time away from the ACOs. This is time they could use to focus more on the pets and on foot traffic. Could the city call center have the FAQs of shelter uses so they can answer these questions? So, I would thought this would be a good staff morale thing. So, thank you for listening, y'all enjoy your meal, and I'm...
Thank you, thank you. All right, Deanna Siegler, City of Rallett.
Yeah, Rallett. Good afternoon, I am Deanna Siegler. I am the Chair of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board Meeting, or Council. But I want to be clear, I'm representing just myself as a citizen because we didn't have an opportunity to meet as a board to kind of come together with our full recommendation. I'm very concerned about the change to five days a week for shelter being open as part of the budget proposal for many of the same reasons that Janine just mentioned. The shelter has been at capacity most of two thousand and twenty-two, and as we presented to council in our joint council meeting, we reached eighty percent average occupancy at one point, and there were actually over occupancy during some of the days. So if you take an entire day away that the public cannot reclaim their animals or potential adopters cannot come in, or potential rescue organizations can't come and get an animal, that is just compounding the problem of the small shelter. We do recognize that we've got to do some things to improve staff morale and retention, though. And I know that was the whole focus of that part of the change. So, we fully, I fully support the reduced operating hours at the shelter, but just five, six days a week instead of five days a week. The citizens often struggle to come pick up a dog before five if they're working. And so, the shift that Janine proposed of twelve to six gives an extra hour in the evening that citizens could come reclaim or adopt an animal. So, if the final recommendation is to proceed with five days a week, please, please do not make it back-to-back days. That is very, very, that's going to be very difficult for the found animals that she talked about, reclaiming an animal. I know my dog got impounded one time many years ago, and it was on the weekend, and I had to wait till Monday to come get them. If I had to wait, you know, two whole days, that would, that would be really bad. So, I understand trying to improve retention there and do some things, but I think there's some adjustments that can be, to be made, and I'm not in favor of five days a week for the shelter.
Thank you, thank you. And then Jeff Sheldon, City of Rallett.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Seven-two-four-two Liberty Grove. I'm the President of SCORE. Ideally, you should have in front of you a business card with the information about what SCORE is, but on the backside is some information about what we do. And we assist senior citizens in Rallett that are in need. Now, this could be medical bill, it could be a car repair, it could be rent, it could be the utilities, but we will help them. Now, over the past two years, with COVID and inflation, we've seen a change in the character of the seniors that we've been helping. Two elements here. One is the inflation, the cost to the seniors who are living in the city of Rallett. Let me identify who we're particularly helping. There are about sixty-three thousand seniors, sixty-three thousand people in the city of Rallett. Nine hundred to a thousand are fifty-five and above and below the poverty line. These are the folks that we see. I imagine you do not see them every day. You do not see them probably once a week. We see them one-on-one when we interview them for assistance. And what we've seen is depression, anxiety, and some other associated mental health concerns. So what I'm asking you to do is to consider funding a senior counseling service in the city of Rallett for seniors fifty-five and above, below the poverty line. There are two reasons for this. One of which I've already mentioned is the stress, the depression, and the anxiety that currently that we observe. But it's also documented in the American Society on Aging. There is a print twenty-two issue has reported the impact of COVID-nineteen on the mental and physical health of older adults as follows. That is, thirty percent report loneliness, seventeen-point-two times more likely at risk for depression, and ten-point-eight times more likely to experience anxiety. So funding by the city is required, is requested, but would be required if you really want to be of service to these seniors. We're asking for sixty thousand dollars per annum for the coming fiscal year based upon serving approximately sixty seniors at a cost of sixty-five dollars per session. And per session means we're expecting probably ten to twelve sessions per individual. Now, the cost could also cover if it were an individual or if it's for an individual and the individual's family. There would be no change in the cost per session. If this were to be funded, we could begin October one and work through the years. Sixty, sixty seniors per annum is an estimation based upon the population size and the estimation of those seniors below the poverty line. Now, in addition to SCORE, others would be able to direct them to, to the reviewing agency and for registration. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, appreciate it. And then our last comment is from Elisa Bowers, City of Rallett.
Hello, everybody. It is great to see you guys. And I think that the budget looks really good. I think they've done a great job. The one thing that I would ask you to really consider as you move forward into this process is the, the character of stewardship. And I think that it is really important that we have enough staff, low-level staff, that can take care of the small items that crop up on a daily or weekly basis in all of our facilities and in our parks department. So I would just ask that you really consider, is this the right time to go after some bright, new shiny things? Or is this the correct time to really look at everything that we already own and take care of it? The other thing, I really like the switch for the hours. I think that's a great idea. I think you guys have done a great job. And that's it.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All righty then, we will move on to our first and only item. And I don't have that in front of me, so it's easy to run.
So, we're going to pick up where we left off. First section, we're going to go through CIP. We're going to go through CDVG, that kind of allocation method that we use there. And then, there's a couple of other last-minute topics, and then we'll start on kind of collective decision-making, where we think we're going to go. So, Council, as you know, first thing that we, we do, since we dedicate, for the most part, we dedicate our CDVG fund for alley improvements. And of course, they have to be spent on alleys that are in certain census block designated areas. Council, some years ago, quite a while ago, had, had desired the ability to be able to set aside funds for things like home repairs and sidewalk replacement in income-based areas that often get overlooked in these kinds of hundred, fifty-million-dollar budgets. So, one thing that Council had asked to do at that time was they wanted originally to put it in the CDVG money. And the issue that, that we came up against is that the restrictions and the, really, the administration of those funds are highly complex, difficult, and onerous. And so, what we decided to do at that point was, Council was comfortable, as long as we could do the same things, Council was comfortable spending CDVG money on alleys and then, and then having that same allotment for these other programs that we would run under our rules and where the reporting would be as onerous as what CDVG requires it. So, each year, we set aside those funds. We've already had some conversations about it, but in the purple area, you can see is about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, which is the amount of money that we've set aside for next year in the CDVG fund for alley improvements. So, traditionally, we, we have, we've done some, the housing rehab program. That's one where it is really onerous to manage under CDVG. There's an annual allotment for Life Message and Salvation Army, sidewalk replacement. Now, you may remember that the city has had a sidewalk replacement program for years, but a few years ago, Council expressed a desire to make it income-based. So, you know, if you had a high salary but could, you know, tap into, you know, you're paying your half of it, it was a little unfair for some people who could not even afford their half, that may not have the income for it. So, Council kind of made that income-based. And then also park improvement. Again, these would be areas where it's already a depressed area, at least by CDVG standards. So, we wanted to make sure that, that you were still comfortable with this kind of allotment. If not, or if not, then this is the time to propose those changes.
Do we have an update on Salvation Army, and how much money they have left, and how many people they've served, and...
I think it was, they've pretty much used all of their community.
They were running short by May or June this year.
They asked for some additional funding, about forty thousand dollars additional, but I don't have that data, but we can get it.
Oh, it was more just a curiosity, kind of.
Absolutely.
They're going through it.
Add it to the list of questions.
And that is a good question, because there were some years where we were not spending it all, but really, since the pandemic, they're, they're blowing through it pretty quick.
And they must be receiving bills.
Say again?
They depend on their utility bills.
Helping people with their utility bills.
They did ask for additional money. Mayor Jim, do you remember? Mayor Jim.
This is Mayor Jim.
And the, we did see a reduction in the Life Message, right? And it wasn't a little bit higher last year, Life Message?
It was slightly higher. It was reduced because the... That one, the ones that kind of does a pass through from CDVG when we get from the funds. And it's kind of a pass through, they reduce the amount of money that we do get. And so, because of that reduction, we had to reduce it somewhere as opposed to reduce that. Now, there is an option later on, and there's an item that the Council did accept, a donation of fifty thousand dollars from the Rallett Housing Fund Association. And I know that that's coming up on the, the, so here in the sixth council meeting as to how to use that money. Some of that could be, that some of that funding is kind of a follow-up after we do Life Message.
That answered your question, right?
Yeah, I think you explained it before, I couldn't remember why that was.
Last year, it was about a hundred and ninety-three thousand, I think, that we got from CDVG, and this year, that amount was reduced, I think, one-seventy-one. I'm not, don't hold me to those exact dollars, but I think that's pretty close.
Because they reduced the amount of income restrict, or, you know, what do we call that? And, yeah, I'm trying to remember the term, but yeah, they reduced the area.
The number of areas that you deserve.
So we've been doing this several years now, right?
Oh, yeah.
And so, I presume that means then that our annual audit has looked at whether this, the pass-through especially, meets the requirements from HUD with the CDVG funds? Is that...
These pass-through programs don't have to meet those requirements because this is using our city cash funds. What does have to go through the city audit are those three programs at the top that are actually CDVG programs. So the bottom is kind of what we in kind contribute with general fund dollars cash to fund projects that could be CDVG projects, but they're less burdensome administratively to have on the cash.
Life Message used to be... Life, Life Message used to be funded out of CDVG directly, CDVG. And I think, what, a year ago is when we made this change?
It was either for this fiscal year or it was for last fiscal year. But we made that change coming out of the pandemic, so...
What was that?
Coming out of the pandemic.
I know, what was the reason again?
Part of it was just the management having, making sure that, that we could account for the dollars without being under the same burden. Salvation Army, just so y'all know, they just do a spectacular job of keeping up with all that, every, every single person. And it was, I don't want to tap dance around, but...
You look like you have something on your mind.
No, just be frank, I'm uncomfortable kind of doing the bait and switch with the CDVG. It's what it feels like to me. It may be all purposely illegal, but it feels like bait and switch to get a hundred and... We get two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars from HUD grants, and then we said, okay, we're going to throw money into alleys, which we probably would have done anyway. And instead, we're going to swap this money, you know, pull money out of the left pocket to go pay for this and money out of the right pocket for that. So it just, it doesn't feel right to me.
I get the burden aspect, but when you just mentioned Salvation Army, they're both in the top and the bottom, so apparently, they're capable of meeting the reporting burden. It looks to me like the, and this, by the way, black on purple doesn't work. Park, park improvement, sidewalk replacement, and the housing rehabilitation, those are Rallett city-specific programs, right? So we should be able to meet that burden as well, I would think. Life Message, they've got a, you know, somewhere between a five and ten million dollar budget according to their nine-ninety, I would think that they'd have the ability to meet that burden as well. So, it, it makes me uncomfortable. I'm not opposed to making this kind of expenditure necessarily, but it does worry me that it puts our HUD funds at risk. If someone comes in and says, well, you know, you're not really using the money the way we think you should be. So, okay. Well, they're not, they're not connected.
Yeah, so, so let me say this, Brian, that that is not absolutely correct. We, CDVG is very specific on how to spend those funds. These alley improvements absolutely comply with the requirements under the CDVG, under HUD. And they have to be, the alleys have to be built and or approved in a specific area, one of those census blocks that qualifies for distressed area. So you have to meet all the requirements. These meet it, doctors have never had, had an issue with it. What was at stake was, there was a push for several years by a couple council members at the time who wanted us to do these other things that were also allowed by CDVG. But the problem was the burden on staff to manage that under the CDVG. We didn't have the staff for it, and at the time, Council wasn't willing, I don't think the city was willing, to put more money into resources when we could do this. This will never get us into legal trouble with HUD. If we were not spending the funds correctly, then you're absolutely a hundred percent correct, but we aren't.
Well, basically, how I look at it is, all the things in white are the restricted, you know, HUD-acquired stuff, and then the purple is unrestricted. I mean, that's basically reoccurring concept of general.
Well, what Council really decided to do is match what we were getting from CDVG in those general fund capital maintenance dollars. So it's two separate pots. There's a CDVG pot. Council made the strategic decision to match whatever this amount is with, with additional dollars for this, to do some additional projects, right?
And so, this is, I just want to make sure that we're not making this sound like we're doing something wrong, because we're not. This is only about facilitating the administrative process and administrative overhead and the burden for that. That's all this was.
I think I was one of the ones that pushed for more parks projects, so I'll raise my hand to that.
No.
That was in the, I was in the, I was in the same boat with you when I first got on Council, but once you sat down and explained it, it's not like we're spending less money. We're spending the exact same amount of money. It's just a matter of what pot it comes out of to make it easier to be able to manage that money.
But it sounds like we're spending less staff administrative money.
Actually saves...
It's actually just a time, time base.
And we've been able to do a lot of really good...
And as long as it's gone through the audit, so that someone comes in, you know, there's, there is what is right, and there is what can be turned to look like it's not. And that's always a concern.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent, which is why alleys is the easiest one to drop them into because it's steadfast, it's tested, it's easy to do. Those projects are already in the works. They're already running with our normal CIP. And it really is, you spend all that money down below the line on alleys and then have to administer all of those separate grants individually, or you just all spend it on one project, administer one grant, it's already a true-tested thing, and then spend stuff that you don't have to do all that stuff on below, but still meet the same criteria. As you notice, we're not going to do improvements in areas that don't meet. We hold ourselves to the same type of criteria that, that HUD would.
All right, any questions then about the CDVG allocation?
So on the, the city-funded projects that Brian mentioned, the park projects, the sidewalk and the housing rehabilitation program, are we consistently, year after year, spending all of those funds? Or are we occurring a bounce of that?
I think we're spending it all...
Some of them are a little bit delayed, like, for one reason or another. The Kenwood Heights Shelter has been delayed. They have it, it's in design, it's in engineering, I think, I don't know where it's at with it. But I think it's in engineering. It's a pavilion, a pavilion at Kenwood Heights. And so, for the most part, we are currently caught up. For many years, we spent significant dollars at Isaac's Drugs to do projects there. That's the one from last year, but I think it's in engineering.
So do we have a balance sheet somewhere that shows that has an outstanding liability for future spending?
We can provide what the balances are as of today in those, in those particular projects, the unspent dollars.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just to understand, you know, out of, out of the sidewalk replacement program, is that being utilized by our citizens? Do they even know it exists?
I do know.
And if, if we have thirty thousand dollars in that account, why aren't we going to drop fifty more in it? Because it sounds like that thirty would already cover the next twelve.
Long as we figure out another way to do it, right? Maybe it's not, maybe we go back to the fifty.
Right.
Which I think we should consider.
I agree. I do know that one specifically, you all said was really popular.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's a good program, absolutely.
And, and the thing is, for a lot of residents, our, our public interest is the fact that, particularly at night, when you're riding your bike or you're walking along these sidewalks, there's a gap that sticks up like that, easy trip, somebody gets hurt. And then, from the homeowner's perspective, they're required to fix those sidewalks if, if, and then, they don't have the funding, so this is the way to help them with that.
I, I really wish we could add another fifty to sidewalk and do fifty as income-based and fifty as...
Then when we get to decision-making, make a note on that.
So, the, the income-based puts it into the same regions we saw before in terms of the alleys, so to exclude certain parts of the city.
Right.
Any reason we can't then just take this and split it out by some means? Are we getting requests from... Are we getting requests from other parts of the city outside of those regions?
We, we do, we do. A- again, part of the issue was in those early years, when we first created the fifty-fifty program, you know, people who could afford their, their fifty percent got on the list really quick, and we always had, um, too many people to meet the need, and they would carry into the next year and the next year and the next year. But, but a few years ago, about, about four years ago, I think, we started talking about making this income-based, and I think two years ago we did, we made it income-based. But I will say this, uh, at least based on historical trends, there's, there's a much greater need than this amount of money.
Any other questions on this?
All right, so moving into the five-year CIP, um, there's only, we have several pages to go through. Uh, I think this is fine. Obviously, the first one, the first schedule, it has to do with bonds, and as y'all know, we do three-year bond cycles. So, um, next summer, we will sell the last seven point one million dollars from the last bond election cycle. And, um, and then we would have, uh, the next bond election the, the year following in May of twenty twenty-four. And then if that passes, then we would sell the first tranche of that that summer, and that's the cycle that we've been on. So at this point, there's no way to really know how much to, to budget for that. Uh, we do have a list of what we think we would be able to financially afford, um, without making adjustments to the tax rate, um, which does not obviously include facilities. But, uh, but with this year, such a big jump in assessed value, that's something we'll have to recalculate. And then just, uh, understanding, you have not made a hard, concrete decision on this, but we roughly have the, um, the, uh, fire station number five down Sapphire Bay set aside up there at twelve million dollars. And so, uh, we got started with design, um, that's going to go, so sometime in the spring. Once, once we have a better cost estimate, then we'll start talking about how we're going to actually, how and when we're going to sell those bonds to finance it. And then just some of our grant projects, and we just mentioned all the CDBG funds that you saw in another, uh, another slide.
Can we go back a second?
Yep.
Uh, so the twenty twenty-two sale, we've got Toller Business Park Phase One and Two, Country Area Estates Phase One and Two. Uh, we talked a month or so ago about the increase in costs for Kiesa Road. Do these numbers look sufficient still at this point in time to complete the Phase One and Phase Two of those two projects? Or do we have any idea?
For which project again?
We have two, uh, we actually have three on there, but one's next year, the Toller Business Park and the Country Area Estates.
We haven't really done a reanalysis of them. Toller Business, uh, is still in design, so until we get the design done, it's sort of premature to, to, to get the, and the, and the cost estimate other than when we've already got a, a ballpark, an engineering cost.
You would already have the EOPC, right? Engineers estimate, problem.
Not until it's designed, so.
Not until it's designed, okay.
Yeah, or at least at a certain milestone, right?
I, I think, uh, we, we have a right or a reason to be concerned.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've lately have been seeing the new estimates coming in from, you know, the stuff coming across our desk here that they're substantially, not just mildly, but substantially when the bids come in, above what the estimates were when they were made a couple, three years ago, so. Do we have other projects with funding available to supplant these if necessary?
Um, all of our funds are, are tied up, obviously. We have cash funding we set aside, for example. Um, our options would be here, this, this is the way a lot of cities do it. Probably they get to the end of their bond program for whatever bond, uh, the bond program is, the voters approve. And, uh, in a high, in a, in a time of increasing cost or inflation, they will, they might have a project that wasn't finished. So, um, that project would either be set up for a future bond election, or if you were close enough and could find the resources, then you would, you would cover the overage yourself. We don't know how much the overage is just yet, so, but you would know before we get ready to award the project.
Yeah, I, I, what's in the back of my mind is I've seen a few projects come across, a lot of them coming through the consent agenda where we will have found some funding in, you know, leftover from an earlier project, and then we will use that to transfer in. Do we have a total accounting for that, is that something that we keep track of?
Yes, we, we do, for, by, by project even.
So that's a, something that maybe would be of interest to council as we go through and look at these capital projects to know kind of what coverage we've got, so we don't have to decide today that, well, maybe one point five three-nine for Toller Business is not enough, we need to allocate two hundred out of budget now, or do we have some coverage elsewhere to take care of that, so.
Okay. This next section, um, deals with the cash that we set aside. So as y'all know, the city puts aside over three, three million dollars, about three point six now, that, uh, essentially comes out of cash that, from the general fund, utility fund, wherever the, the sources of funding are. This is for our enterprise leasing program, foam injection, crack seal, this entire list, uh, all the alley improvements. Now, we'll tell you that part of this funding, also about eight hundred thousand of that comes from the, uh, I don't remember the dollar amount, but the, the additional fee on our utility bill.
Paying maintenance fee.
Paying maintenance fee, so about eight hundred thousand of it is funded from the fee. And in addition to that, we also set aside, uh, cash, um, for, uh, for this as well. You see the arcs program at fifty thousand is already in there, the facilities improvements. Uh, this is more of major renovations, and they, this is not a build to new buildings. I just want to make sure that that's clear. So it could, it could be money to replace the carpet here, for example. It could be like we're going to do in the front, um, front area up there, tear out the bathrooms and, and redo all that. That's, that's the kind of stuff we're talking, it's not really even just the operational cost of, you know, painting or something like that, but it's, it's to fix something that's broken. It's, uh, maybe to, to, to reseal the roof, the HR, we've done that a couple times, I think. So, excuse me, so those are the kind of things that we do with those funds.
Can I, can I ask you a question on that, Brian? How, how do we decide or prioritize what needs to be repaired or have replacements? Uh, and I ask specifically because we met with the animal shelter and talked to them, or, or with friends of relevant animals, I should say, and talked to them, there was some concern about like outdoor kennel replacement and things like that. So how does that type of stuff make that list?
So ea- so each year, all the departments submit their request to Public Works, uh, whatever those projects are. And, um, so we, at RCC, we've replaced carpet before, um, we've, uh, you know, we've done some roof work, we've done, um, uh, windows, um, so it's, it's those kind of things. So there is a list, and what happens is during the budget process, we will go through all the outstanding list. What Public Works staff does, they try to, um, put it in the year that they think they can give it on the basis of an allocation of two hundred thousand a year. So our directive to them is, you know, sure, we'd like to spend eight hundred thousand this year. What we're going to do is do two hundred thousand a year, and then you need to find the best fit. We do the same thing with our fleet, our fleet services, uh, our replacement program, where we allocate a certain amount per year, and then what they do is they come back and then they manage the number of vehicles and windows those get replaced on the basis of that annual allocation. So, um, but that's where that, that comes. So obviously, you know, it's, it's, uh, we don't necessarily provide that list, it's available to be provided, but we have a multi-year plan of what needs to be done. Uh, and so it goes through that vetting process, no different than anything else in our operating budget. We're going to allocate X millions of dollars a year to police and fire, and it's for X number of people or X amount of, of supplies and fuel and all the other things that we do in that budget. So the two hundred thousand is more of an allocation, a funding strategy in order for us, because what was happening before, we would come to council with all of the requests, and then you're talking about a fifteen thousand dollar item here, a twenty thousand dollar item there, and that really gets cumbersome. Uh, we do think though, at some point, we're going to have to start increasing those funds. Because when we, what we were comfortable with at one time was we felt like we would be moving faster in terms of getting these new facilities started and finished. Uh, given where I think we are right now, um, we, there is a lot of work that needs to be done for our buildings, including the animal shelter, unless we are going to replace it. Does that help?
It does, yeah, I, I think.
Would you like the list?
No, I don't think so. When there was, I don't think that would happen.
Well, it's been, and specific to the, specific to the animal shelter, obviously we all know it needs a lot of work. That's why we all think it's going to make the top of the list, but was it last year's budget or two years ago, we put an additional hundred and.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty into it?
Wasn't it more than that?
I thought it was a hundred eighty.
Well, I think it said.
I thought it was one eighty.
One eighty.
It was a hundred and eighty, so I mean, we've, we've recognized it and put more money towards it, and this is a conversation that, you know, council can have if you think it needs more. You know, depending on if that's going to make the bond would sway my vote, you know, depending on how much money more I put into it, because all of our facilities, you know.
Yeah, to me, this, this is more of the list of, from a couple slides ago, this is, this is just general fund cash. And so I, I see it as more like if, if the gate down at the police station breaks and we can't get police cars in and out, that's going to get fixed right now. If a bay door at a fire station doesn't go up and down, I mean, we're going to get that fixed right now. We've got some areas of the, of the shelter, particularly outdoor kennels, where we don't have adequate coverage outside. We have gates that don't seal correctly or latch correctly, and things like that are concerns.
They're expensive, or they're not expensive things, they're, they're, they're like, here's a couple hundred.
Well, let me say this, if the bay door doesn't work at the fire station, that's not coming out of this. Okay? If we're going to reg, to gut and rebuild the kennel, uh, the kennels, that could be something that could be vetted against other projects on that list.
So maybe these don't even rise to that level, the things that I'm talking about, they don't even qualify for like.
To replace, to replace a gate, no, but to replace the kennels, yes.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's more of a life maintenance.
Yeah. Okay, that's.
So, and, and just as a balancing act, it, it, and I think we did this with, uh, this analogy with our streets, uh, maybe earlier this summer, but, but we, it's almost like three buckets of money, okay? There's the first in your operating budget that is supposed to cover the kind of things that happen all the time. Then you have your bond money for the really big projects that are going to be twenty-year bonds, so it needs to be something that's going to last for twenty years.
Yep.
This is the in-between. So we call it capital maintenance because it, it extends the life of whatever it is, but it's not, it's not a pothole, okay? Um, it's foam injection, you know, so, but it's not the replacement of a street either, which then would be a bond. So that's, that's kind of how we vet that. Um, what I would suggest, or, or we could, we could consider doing, um, you know, is certainly showing those five-year plans that we have for those kinds of buckets of money. Not everything is a true bucket, but, uh, but, but I think that as a balancing act, that, you know, kind of the seesaw effect, this is the middle part that should not shift very much because you're going to fund about the same amount per year, and you can see going from around three six, three, three seven to four, four point five, point, four point six, because what we have in the outer years is like a ten percent, um, increase each year to these programs. So, um, that, that's, I only just wanted to make sure that we understood, this is the in-between money.
Thank you.
All right, uh, utility fund, capital maintenance has the same, the same issue. So, um, you can see right now it's about two point seven million, it has an escalator in there as well, like ten percent per year, uh, to grow from. Um, and, you know, this one is just the nature of the bees. This one, we also show, uh, like some of our vehicle replacements. So we have a fleet replacement plan or, uh, fund where we keep it for the general fund stuff, but for the enterprise fund, just simply because of the way it's accounted for, um, we account for it here. Um, there's also some things that we do, we set aside money for, you know, you got to paint your water towers, you know, every so many years, you got to replace, uh, lines and stuff. Again, you have a water line break, and we rush out there to do that. Again, that should not necessarily come from this, it should be planned stuff. You know, we're going to replace a thousand foot of pipe in this area, so we're going to plan for those kinds of things out of this in-between money.
So lifts and pump stations, remind me, is that general upkeep, that's not generators, right?
There were, let me, I'm trying to remember, there was going to start trying to budget for so many, uh, lift stations per year.
Generators, generators have their own line at one time under power.
But we, we removed it and when we used the ARCA money, because that, that.
That's the part I was getting to, I was just making sure that in that line item that that didn't include generators.
Yeah, why, why eight fifty this year, three hundred next?
What you're eight fifty for, Ryan?
Lift and pump station, so this year we're going to upgrade all of our old fifty-year-old water pumps. So we put more money into that because of that.
Makes sense.
So you, you will see any given year some shifting around of, of some of the priorities based on what they're trying to do.
Makes perfect sense.
Your notice, in year two, we have four hundred thousand for tower and tank maintenance, then it drops back down to a hundred. They call out Chisa, uh, water tower specifically. Guys, I don't know if y'all, it's very expensive to paint those water towers, you know? I keep thinking if we use drones with spades.
I'm thinking the same thing, yeah.
Spray control, you know, that would be so cool, right? If somebody hits that, I'm telling you, they'll, they'll retire on the spot.
It's coming.
So anyway, these, again, these are highly programmed with planned out. Any questions on utility cash maintenance? Um, now, this is our revenue bonds. What makes this a little different is that unlike general obligation bonds, which require a vote of the public, utility revenue bonds do not. So we have a, uh, a, a carefully designed, uh, debt program so that it doesn't affect the utility rates. So as y'all know, over a twenty-year period, you start having debt falling off, and then you have new debt coming on that is picking up that, and by managing that program, then we're able to issue about seven million dollars a year. This particular year, we put in an extra seven hundred thousand, which we were able to fit within the existing rate structure, but these are all the projects we would need to do, and as you could see, one project alone took that up in twenty twenty-three. Seven million dollars for the, and that's just to finish it because we're also funding, uh, three million dollars, uh, next year for the Merritt Road Waterline Project. So these things could be pretty expensive. Again, um, these are bond projects, so you would not be able to fund seven million dollars out of your capital maintenance program when you're only funding it just under three million dollars a year. So that's why these are bond programs, these are also twenty-year bonds. So again, we manage that debt service, and, um, and that, that's how we're able to establish this program.
Brian, can you remind me the reason why we're doing the Merritt Road Waterline? Is that a maintenance, or is that a preparation of infrastructure for developing up that way, which?
Ryan, what is that?
It's an increase of the thirty-six thirty, and Jeff helped me out here.
Yeah.
Thirty-six thirty water line that is going to eventually feed Sapphire Bay. And, and North Shore. And North Shore. And, and development that is expected throughout the city, it's been planned for a while.
Okay, thank you.
What's the current capacity up there? I mean, is there just not?
I don't know that you can actually put a number on capacity. We, we got a twenty-four and sixteen up there, but the thirty-six is leaving for the future. Do, do, do we know, I mean, millions of gallons? I mean, we, we have the citywide, what is it, thirteen, right? Thirty-five million gallons a day.
Put the bottom line in, it's needed for the, for our future capacity, and that was identified by Praise and Nichols as a part of our master plan.
Yep.
Drainage fund does the same thing, uh, although, uh, much, uh, more limited fashion. We have about six hundred thousand dollars a year based on the fee structure. So drainage fund has, um, I think essentially one person or maybe it's one point something people that manage that fund. There's also some operating expenses, one of which is that annual TSEC, uh, uh, analysis we have to do for about thirty thousand a year. we have to do for about $30,000 a year. And then they have a very large piece of equipment. So when you see the $70,000 a year, it's not $70,000 a year of new equipment. It is essentially to build up the resources so that when that piece of equipment has to be replaced, you have the money for this $300,000, $400,000 piece of equipment, if that makes sense. The rest of that, every last other penny, above and beyond those things, goes into our miscellaneous drainage improvements plan for those. The other thing is, we do have a, we did sell back-to-back bonds back in 2005 or '06, I believe, that are being paid off here, as you can see, zero for debt until 2026 because we're paying 20-year bonds. So 2027 is the first year we can issue new bonds out of that money or put it into the cash capital. But as you can see, we're already starting to identify some pretty large projects that would be good candidates for bond programs. So about four points, so we're projecting that by 2027, we could issue about $4.2 million in bonds. And I think that was all, yes, that was all of the CIP. Any questions on the drainage fund? Refuge fund does not have any capital.
So Long Branch Erosion Study East Bank. We had the Long Branch south of Miller.
Yeah, it is Long Branch south of Miller, yes. We studied the western bank a couple of years ago. And now we're engaged in designing the stabilization resulting from that study. But we really should.
Thinking left and right, West Bank, okay.
Yeah.
So we're not doing both sides of the stream?
We are not. Wait.
I'm confused. You weren't doing both sides of the stream?
We are. We looked at the, first of all, the east side of that stream is not nearly as bad as the western side. Western side was losing right out of the property soon.
Interstalls there.
And the eastern side is not nearly as bad. But we do, we don't want to be morred, so that's why we're studying it.
Totally. The west side was the more immediate. And the study said that that's where we really needed to put some resources into. We sold the bonds and it was approved. What this is, what he's saying is, we want to get back to the east side at some point in the future. But it's the west side we need to address now. That make sense? And it's always, it's money. Okay, so what were we going to go through next? I think we do that when we do the wrap-up. Okay, let's do this. Ed here, yeah, Ed's here. So we received an additional $334,000 from the FEMA reimbursement from the 2015 tornado. That was not a part of our planning model. We were not prepared for, to receive that. So emergency management has proposed a list of items to use that with. You're not required to use this for that purpose. We can use it for anything. But we wanted to at least show you the list of what emergency management was asking for. Because, and I'll just say it this way, you know, emergency management ends up being an afterthought so often. So if we have the opportunity to do some things that, quite frankly, most of them on this list would never get funded, I think we take a serious look at it. Now, I realize that this is the time to talk about this. If we were to try to do this in mid-year, when you don't know what the other demands and needs are, but this is the right time to have this conversation. And I wanted Ed to have a chance to tell you guys what it is that he would like to see done. Ed?
Sure, thank you. So this list, I work with various stakeholders, COAD and internal departments, Spookwood Parks, BDFD, fellow partners. This list is a multidisciplinary, multi-h agile list that's meant to help the city fill in some capability gaps that we've identified through prior disasters, special events and other emergencies, normal operations. But also by taking a look at some of the emerging threats to the city, including Sapphire Bay, larger, more frequent special events, more extreme temperature events, as we've had in the last two years. But also probably the most politically salient threat right now is active attack, aft shooter events. So while this is not the full list that we identified, this is within the budget based on the projected amount that we're going to receive from FEMA. We have yet to receive those funds. We're expecting to receive those within the next fiscal year. But as most of us know, when FEMA sets six months, you probably need to plan for two or three times that much time, so. I will say that this morning probably showed why we need to probably invest what's reasonable in future preparedness for the city. Because we're going to be dealing with more frequent and extreme events, whether it's natural, man-made. So one last thing on this list is not the citywide preparedness project. That would have been my top priority. That project, I've been told is going to be funded out of the CAREZAC funding. So I took that off the list. If there were any cost underruns, I would ask that council allow me to either fund a little bit more of that project or any cost overruns from the other projects. Again, this is a slimmed-down version. I identified about $650,000 worth of projects needs that we, like Brian stated, we would never likely be able to fund, even though we've identified these after almost every single disaster or special event. I can go into greater detail on some of these projects if you'd like.
The Public Safety Committee looked at this a few days ago and asked some questions, looked at the each item and kind of the whys. And we are in support of this spending plan. It just would make our city more prepared. Any questions on these items?
I have one answer.
Is that good?
Good for me.
All right. Brian, any questions?
I'm looking over here because these are the guys who've got to answer the call. They're nodding their heads, so.
We've been intimately involved in this whole process. We know everything that's on here and we support everything.
Yeah, the one thing that occurred to me was, I know you were looking for some radio replacements, but if this is more priority for you, I'm good.
We have an internal emergency management team. And we met to go over this list. Again, this wasn't everything on his list, but this was the prior times items that matched the source. All right.
Very good.
I think that's a thumbs up.
All right, so we're going to go over the master fee schedule next. And then I think there's only, there might only be one other item to do the board's commission request.
Okay, thank you, council. So we're going to go over the master fee schedule with everybody here. Historically, departments have been starting to review their fees on an ad-needed basis as part of the annual led process. However, this fiscal 2023 budget, partners are direct to perform a comprehensive review of all 649 of the city's fees to ensure capture of available revenue and maintain competitiveness with surrounding cities. Fees were reviewed to see if they were still applicable, if fees needed to be added or deleted, if they were aligned with comparable cities, whether or not they should be increased or decreased. A total of 649 fees were reviewed. Seven sections within the master fee schedule are proposed to be adjusted, with 80 fees increasing, 10 fees decreasing, one fee deletion, 14 fee additions, and 194 fees within those sections remaining unchanged. Each of the seven sections will be discussed in a moment. The revenue projections contained within the fiscal year 2023 budget include the changes listed below. And the particular impacts will be discussed by Fund M section. Changes to solid waste fees, 41 of the 49 existing fees are scheduled to change. All of the changes are the result of the increase to the cost of our contract with MCC due to increases to the CPI and diesel fuel price index. These changes in fees represent a 3.5% increase to residential customers and a 5% increase to commercial customer rates. 14 of the existing 56 fees are proposed to increase with one fee deletion in addition to three new fees, utility fees. The majority of these fees changes reflect increases to our volume water rates as a result of recommendations from our consultants provided water rate study. The changes to our volume rates will increase the average customer using 7500 gallons per month bill by $2.21%. Both the utilities, utility fees as well as the refuse rates fees we saw at the early workshop. More changes to utility fees in addition to the water volume rate increases. We are proposing changes to our residential and commercial deposits and meter tampering fee due to a survey of comparable cities. For the residential deposit, we are proposing an increase from $75 to $100, which puts us slightly below average. Our commercial deposit will increase from $100 to $150, which also puts us slightly below average. And we are also proposing to increase our meter tampering fee from $50 plus the cost of repairs to $200 plus the cost of repairs. Other few changes are being proposed for connection, repair or replacements to the water system. These fees are being raised to bring the amount of the fee up to our actual cost for the purchase of the equipment and adds three new fees for three, four and six-inch meters. The fee for four-inch sewer cap has been deleted, as that is no longer an option. Changes to miscellaneous fees. Of our 49 miscellaneous fees that were reviewed, staff recommended no changes to the existing fees. The library requested the addition of one new fee for overdue Wi-Fi hotspots. The Wi-Fi hotspot rental program has become extremely popular with library patrons. And currently overdue Wi-Fi hotspots is an issue and the fine is the same as all other open materials at 20 cents per day. Hopefully, this new fee will promote prompt return of the hotspots. Fees being proposed to raise to $1 per day. The addition of these fees is not expected to have a noticeable impact on general fund revenue. And the majority of the fees changed that we're going to discuss here today, community development fees. The building and building regulations, businesses, health and planning sections of the master fee schedule combined for a current total of 131 fees. Based upon comparisons to both our peer cities as well as our geographically adjacent cities, 25 fees are being recommended to increase. 10 fees are recommended to decrease. 10 additional fees are being proposed. No fees are scheduled for deletion and 96 fees will remain flat. And that impact of these fee adjustments is expected to add approximately $70,000 in general fund revenue. And that revenue has been included in the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. The fiscal year 2023 proposed budget includes a total of 5.3 million or about 9% in general fund revenue from fees. Like utility billing previously, the fee changes proposed by community development are the result of thorough comparison with our peer and adjacent cities to make sure we remain competitive with the cities in DFW Metroplex and our surrounding area. Many of the fees being recommended for change are charged to the customer as deposits in terms of flat fees plus square footage and are necessarily combined with other fees. However, community development has provided a number of specific examples to help demonstrate the impact of the changes. For example, a single-family permit fees for our 1500-square-foot house would increase from 1250 to 1350, bringing us slightly above the 1337 average of the adjacent cities but below the 1424 average of all the surveyed cities. Apartment fees for a 50,000-square-foot building with 70 units would move from 29,719 to 43,000. Commercial permit fees, $10 increases are proposed to each of the base rate charges for the commercial planning review and commercial permit inspection fees for each square-footed tier, which in this example will use the commercial permit from 4213 to 4232.
Robert, can you go back to the apartment one real quick?
Sure.
That's the fence one.
I'm sorry.
Can you go back to the apartment?
Clipper.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm clicking the wrong.
It's like, no, I'm not going to hear it. Okay, so we're still below the average here then, okay?
Just above the average.
Above.
An average.
It was blue, right?
The green.
Purple. Green is average of all. Red is average of our vicinity cities, our geographically close.
Okay, thank you. My reading glasses don't work from a distance.
Yes. Uh, I'm going to worry.
Fence.
Fence, back to the fence, okay. A $3,500 fence would increase from $30 to $40, remaining below the $55 average of cities within our vicinity. Water heater replacement fee increases from $65 to $75. HVAC replacement increases from $65 to $90, bringing us in line with vicinity cities. Electrical panel changes increases from $65 to $85. Permis of solar panels increase from $150 to $160. Rental registration increases from $12 to $15. Food establishment reinspection fees will be created at $50 in line with vicinity cities are currently charging. A swimming pool reinspection fee is also proposed at $50. This is also in line with what the vicinity cities are charging. A public swimming pool, lake registration fee is also proposed at $50. Liquid waste collar fee is proposed at $150. And a grease trap inspector fee is also proposed at $50. These were proposed to decrease, beginning with the preliminary plat inspection, plat application fee decreasing from $1700 to $1,000, aligning us closer to the vicinity cities, which puts us under average. Final plat fees would be reduced from $2,300 to $1,000 and replat fees from $2,100 to $1,000. Zoning change is proposed to be reduced from $3,000 to $1,250. Special use permits are reduced from $2,750 to $1,300. Quarter of adjustment fees for residential will be halved from $500 to $250, with commercial dropping from $1,900 to $500. Zoning verification letters proposed to increase from $80 to $100. And finally, the fees for framework plan, regulation and phase master plan, major warrants for single-family applicants are to be reduced, with fees for alternative landscaping plans and animal owner surrender being created as new fees. With that, that ends the discussion of the fee section. And I do have a follow-up discussion or a continued discussion on credit card processing fees. But I wanted to stop here if you had any questions about fees.
Animal owner surrender fee, that's a new fee. Tell me what that means. Someone walks into the shelter and wants to hand over their dog to the shelter, they pay a fee?
That's the intent.
Is that going to incentivize people just dumping their dogs?
I agree.
It's not new.
It's not a new fee, but it's not codified.
Oh. How is that? How is that not codified? I just don't get that.
It was a fee that was historically charged. When we went through the fee, um, the fee review, we realized that it's not codified.
I wonder how long they've been doing that without it being codified? Wow. Interesting. So this really isn't new in practice? Is the fee higher than practice or lower than practice? The same.
Okay.
When we've looked at fees in the past, particularly the ones that where there's a significant drop in the cost, the preliminary plat fee and some of those others. Brian, you might know this, was there any methodology to why we kept our fees so high up until this point, this review? Or has it just?
So not every fee is evaluated every year.
Right.
In some cases, some of them go several years before we reevaluate again. So I think that's part of it. It may have been the survey we did at the time. Maybe some cities were really starting to do that. Maybe during the pandemic, they started to throttle back. And so now here we are redoing that and going, oh, what happened? So I think there are some cases where clearly our fees were way too high. One of them in particular, I think this council has brought to our attention. And that was the issue of people going to the BOA, for example, as you saw on that list. So we are proposing to throttle that back a little bit as well, to make it a little bit easier for people that have to go through the variance process. That's not generally your institutional developers and contractors. That's mom and pop. And so that's one reason why I think that that makes sense.
And then on?
And then on in particular, water heater replacements. We're proposing a fee increase, I think, from sixty-five to seventy-five. Oh, that's correct. That's one of those fees where I almost feel like either we should have a very minimal fee or not have a fee at all, because so many people will just replace a water heater and not give it a second thought if they see that there's a large fee out there and potentially endanger themselves or their neighbors as a result. So what is that, is that fee covering the cost of an inspection?
So, and I understand too, oftentimes it's not just one attempt, it, it sometimes is multiple attempts before we can finally get somebody and the homeowner is there when we go and that kind of stuff. But, but essentially it is for the inspection. Maybe a little bit of administration going to permit itself too, but it's primarily for the inspector to drive out there and actually make sure it was set up properly. And we will always do that one because the inspection is, it's life safety, it really is.
Right, and that's, that's kind of my point, right? So a water heater is, I don't know what, four to six hundred dollars in cost? I'm not ready to replace a water heater, so.
If you're doing that for four hundred, you really need it inspected.
Yeah, some of more than that.
Yeah, installed. Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not excited about that.
Purchasing, purchasing six hundred to a thousand installation, you can, go talk to our major box stores and you'll be talking a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. All right. Just a moment.
But I, but I will say this, I agree with the premise, Jeff, that, you know, this is definitely an area we would not want to have an exorbitant fee. You wouldn't really want that anywhere, but, but in particular this, because then people would make a concrete decision, you know, we're just gonna do it. And you might get away with that with, you know, some things in your house, but not something that affects the electric.
Well, I think I share Jeff's concern here, because I've seen the same posts out there, like we started talking about this, all of a sudden it's all over Facebook, well, you know, I, I didn't mind and never called the city, so we, there's, there's a lot of that going on.
Did you give their name and address?
So I guess the question is, is there some way we can incent people to go ahead and get the inspection done? I think that's maybe where you were going with the fee to not disincent.
Yeah, so, so a fee can be, a fee can serve two purposes. It can be a barrier to entry, right, when you don't want somebody to do something, or it can be minimal and allow somebody to do something on the cheap, pretty easy, and ensure that they're doing it safely. There's anything to cover costs, right, our costs, so.
Do people have to be licensed to do that, or can the homeowner do it themselves?
The homeowner can do it themselves as long as they are home-stating the property. But if it's a homeowner that's draining out the property, then they're not allowed by state law to do that one.
And usually if you're paying somebody, they, they schedule the permit for you and it's just overall part of your cost. Yeah, depends on your contractor.
Call Billy Bob's Hot Water Heater.
No, if they go ahead and like they're supposed to do, the city will call you and step in the corner, because they didn't do it. And I didn't, and it was in the cost of pop on you. And they didn't call me, they didn't go.
Well, Jeff, you might want to go check today your hot water heater, because it's about ten years.
Any other questions on this?
I'd like to see the last slide again.
A lot of numbers.
Close your eyes, we'll get dizzy. Okay, so we had board of adjustment, that was a different thing. Major warrants for homeowner applicants, what would that be?
What one's that?
What would major warrants for homeowner applicants be?
For your fewer.
I mean, that's different from a variant, a board adjustment variance, right?
It would be two hundred fifty dollars.
No, I know what it would cost, but what is, give me an example.
So if, if a major warrant would be related to, 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 that's gonna be related to the form-based code. And so if they're in a form-based code district and they're wanting to reduce the setback and say twenty feet to seventeen feet, that would be a major one.
So we're talking about new builds, we're not talking about an existing home.
Yeah, if they're wanting to modify that, that anything from what is already there, if they're doing an addition or a modification.
Okay, an addition that came before, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Different language, same thing.
Right.
And to clarify, a variance, a board of adjustment, it's gonna be the exact same.
The same fee, okay.
It's just two different zoning.
And then a minor warrant, an example of that?
A minor warrant is something that staff could approve that was, and it's, it's not well-defined as to where that line is. And so if it's a small change, say six inches, then staff could agree.
And that off the homeowner's.
One question, is, is it, is a dollar on the hotspots enough to encourage people to bring them back or not? That's only thirty dollars a month, but I think internet costs more than that.
The service, when their, when their device, the rental or the check-up area is done, the service is discontinued at that time?
Yeah, they can't.
So it's basically a paperweight, just a little additional incentive to get it back.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right.
One last thing before we wrap it up here.
Ah, okay.
I wanted to discuss credit card processing charges for building inspections. And fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, community development aligned with MYGOV as a new point-of-sale system to receive payments for fees and services. A requirement to implement in the MYGOV system was to also use its authorized credit card clearinghouse, which dictates credit card processing fees independently from our banking institution or clearinghouses used by other systems across the city. PACE, the clearinghouse used by that system, has the ability to pass through credit card merchant charges directly to the customer rather than have the city recover those costs through increasing the fees themselves or by subsidizing the credit card processing charges of the general fund revenue. The cost of the credit card processing has increased exponentially, as illustrated on the graph above. Once a manageable expense, as RALE has grown, there's been a significant corresponding increase in our credit card charges. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-three proposed budget includes redirecting those credit card charges to only those benefiting from the transaction, saving the general fund eighty thousand dollars. Credit card processing charges for the recenter, library, animal services, jail, public records, and utility billing are provided for at a reduced cost negotiated in conjunction with our banking contract and are not proposed to change at this time.
The, the other thing that has, we've been experiencing, Manal talked about it during her budget, budget information, or budget review, is that you're having institutional developers do large amounts of these and with their cards, which they have the ability to do that corporate cards, and then we end up getting stuck, not with just mom and pop, you know, seventy-five-dollar permit, you know, handling a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent, you know, fee is one thing, but when somebody has hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of permits that they process and we're, you know, that, that is a lot of why we believe, they believe, that we're seeing such a large increase in our fees. It's not, not, and it is also for mom and pops, but that's an incremental part compared to the large, like we just did, you know, Sapphire Bay did their first three-hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars in building permits. My point is, I, I don't know personally that all of them, all of those permit fees were, were charged due this, this method, but I'm just saying that a lot of them want to use the electronic, you know, processing, and it, you can see that this is, this is an area where it's very, very expensive and it's continued as a convenience for them too, not just a convenience for us. So we're kind of toyed around with it a little bit, but we, we made a conscious decision years ago, and, and we had that conversation with council, that we could get a reduced fee under state law, a reduced fee for utility bills if we did not charge for those fees. And our council made a conscious decision that year, we're not going to do that. And then there's others where we do charge a fee for. But we think we need to have this conversation and see where your comfort level is.
So how much is that fee? What's the percentage?
I do not know. Do we have, do we get a hold of PACE to find out if they're necessarily what they're charging?
It's approximately three percent.
Three percent.
Which is pretty high. And then, and one of the things that's happening is that as each new house is typically now paid through the credit card, those fees are not just the general fund fees that are being paid, but the water and sewer impact fees. But we're looking at about ten thousand dollars a house at three percent is what it's costing for each house, and we do about two hundred a year.
But that's what I was gonna ask, is we know what percentage is roughly over ten grand? It's being paid for, I'm correct?
We could do that analysis probably, but I don't know that I can tell you that. But I do know based on the number, and, and this was from the conversation this spring, but based on the number of, of types of permits that we get, just, just, let's call it mom and pops, that's not these numbers.
Right.
And, and you'll remember coming out of the great recession around twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, it was really sometime after that when you started seeing construction start with all the new projects that we had. So that two, twenty, that fourteen thousand dollars back in twenty-sixteen was probably predominantly mom and pops.
Yeah. So, so is our payment system allowed for like an ACH payment?
It is not. I think they do, they, they do such in utility dealers, don't they?
So, so I, I can't go on MYGOV as a developer and pay all my impact fees with ACH or a bank account. I either have the choice of a credit card or I've gotta deliver a cashier's check to the.
Or a personal check.
Or a personal check to the client's card.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna run down to the street to the chamber for quick orientation. I'll be right back. I'm sure y'all will still be here.
Now, so Brian, there is one, one, can I just, for one possibility, I don't know, I know David's not here, and I don't know why I hadn't thought about this before, but, you know, maybe setting a, a minimum, you know, if it's over a certain dollar amount.
That's where I was. That's where I was. That's where I was, I was like, what's that percentage? Because if eighty percent of those charges are over ten grand, then you just set that threshold with ten grand, and that's where they don't kick in.
Well, I think.
Unless they can split their payments, they're not allowed to split their payments.
If we were able to do that, would you guys be comfortable passing on the call of these fees?
I wouldn't.
If we were able to set a minimum threshold, some sort of.
I'd say yes, but let me step back. So we implemented MYGOV, and MYGOV has a requirement that we use PACE, and that's our issue here, right? Okay, so there may be some other avenues, longer-term avenues to pursue as well.
I agree.
That's a tie-in contract.
Somebody that might have more flexibility to you.
That's, well, that's, my, my knowledge is very old, but that would be considered a tie-in contract, and I think those were, are illegal. We should be able to choose our processor. That's something we could ask David about, see what we might be able to do there, but yeah, I'm, I'm on board with a threshold, charge back to developer.
Those are looking at other options, so that they have more options without having to repeat that cost. The only other whole turn of the dice is to not pass the cost on to the taxpayers at large, is to raise all of our fees by three percent, and then you're effectively penalizing everybody else. That's just the wrong way.
Here's what maybe we do. Council will still have to pass a resolution for the master fee schedule, which you'll do in September. Let us look into and see if we could do that minimum, maybe it's a thousand-dollar threshold. I don't want to set it all the way at ten, it'd be really easy for somebody to manipulate that.
Yeah, I agree.
But if you set it like at a thousand dollars, you're gonna cover ninety percent of all mom and pop type of permits they make full during the year.
That's why I'd just be curious to see a breakdown of, you know, charges from a thousand to five thousand, five thousand to ten thousand.
That's what I'm saying, we'll, we'll get that, we'll send that to councils ahead of time, so y'all have a chance to see it, and then when we bring that resolution before you, if, if we can do it, then I'm going to amend the master fee schedule to include a fee, anything above a certain amount, and, but we'll send you the data ahead of time.
Can we get a copy of this?
Of the slide, you mean? Yeah, absolutely. All right. Let's do the board of commissions. Can we find that slide? It was in the last presentation, there was a slide there somewhere about that.
Now, there are the, there are certain conditions, there are conditions at times.
Yeah. By now, they might be paying their.
Eight thousand dollars to buy some different software.
Exactly.
They know they're paying that.
Somebody down here with the.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, can we take a, can we take a five-minute recess?
That's true, I don't need to ask you anything. We're taking a five-minute recess right now.
Okay.
All right, we're back on.
So Mayor, Council, one of our last major topics for discussion are the board's commission requests. So one thing that each year we usually get outside of the teacs, asking for funds, the Chamber, the RCCCC, you know, arts command and not arts committees, Keep Rally Beautiful, those organizations. In addition to that, our own board of commissions makes recommendations, the Gulf Advisory Board, or Rally Diversity Equity includes your commission. So this list includes all of those groups, as well as Jeff Sheldon has made that request with SCORE. So that's what this list is, so.
Missing one.
What are we missing?
The one that was brought up in the last, one from Parks Recreation, and one of that additional four thousand dollars is not, because this was on our fir, our first presentation, and we just found out about it last week.
Was it, you said arts committees?
No.
Parks and Rec. Park five, three, four, five thousand.
Okay, so, so, and Parks.
It is on your list that you got to date it.
Okay.
It's not here.
So, so council, when staff prepares obviously the budget, what you see in gray, which is the current funding.
Sorry, my ears are going off.
So what you see is funded there, that's, that's already in the proposed budget.
Right.
So the one ninety-five is already in the proposed budget. Then on top of that, there were some additional funding requests that, that some of these organizations fed. For example, we did not know SCORE was going to make a request until they mentioned it at the senior advisory board meeting last week. We did know that some of the other entities had made requests, but through our conversations, this was the first opportunity to really have all of those requests in one place. I will tell you initially, one of the motivations for making sure that we had additional funds in the proposed budget, so, so that council could consider these other requests, or some of them, or some part of them, in addition to other programs. So that was why one time it got two ninety, and then we were a little short on probably taxes, so about two seventy-six. So at this point, this is the conversation for council to have, that, and, and I think after this, you now have a complete picture of everything, and I think the next step will be to make those decisions.
So can we, I'm thinking that we should start with decision-making on the top priorities of this council, and then recognize that these are also needs. That way we're not saying we want to do this, that, and the other without kind of considering the whole picture. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do. So I mean, if you're saying move to decision-making and then just kind of work between projects, proposals.
Right, because I think this, this, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, right? Two-seventy-six, which is not gonna be enough to cover all of our needs, so we're gonna have to play the add and subtract game.
Well, let's do this, because we may end up coming back to some various different slides. Can you pull up the Excel spreadsheet where we sent the council this assignment? I think, I think it'd be good if we could explain this slide. No, not that one, that one. So, so as you know, we felt like you made some decisions the other day, but until you actually say yes, I mean, a, a vote for it, it's not. So we've broken out and grouping what we kind of feel like are tentative decisions already made, that was what we were hearing. The second section is. The second section is potential decisions to consider that we think you may be willing to make. And then the third set is just how we're going to fund the, the land mine planning, uh, and where those, the buckets of funds will come from there. So, you have about eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in one-time money in ARPA that is made up of three hundred plus thousands that was, uh, not allocated, and five hundred thousand that was set aside for cost overruns. I'm not saying we have to allocate all of it, I'm just saying that's, that's where that came from. FEMA was the three thirty-four, that as you heard from Ed earlier, uh, recommendation to use that, but we, if you had said no, we still wanted to show that as a potential resource. And then the two seventy-six you just mentioned there with the ongoing. What we've shown you here is that if we move the one-time equipment for the four officers already in the proposed budget to the ARPA funds, the one-time money, that frees up a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in the operating budget. And then, if you were say to hire an additional four officers, and were also agreeable to fund that equipment out of those ARPA funds, then we only have to figure out how to fund the annual, the annual salaries and benefits. That's how we've kinda built this slide. So, now, you have a bottom line number at the bottom. One-time money, such as from ARPA or FEMA, which we've kinda allocated, and I think council was okay with that, uh, can be used like for equipment, or things like that. But, but ongoing money is really like salaries and benefits, or people need to be ongoing money. So, I wanted to make sure you knew, this is where I think you have resources. For discussion only, and only because y'all have heard me say this, one of my, my highest priorities is those four other, four more officers. You could, if you were willing to do the, the funding of the equipment through the ARPA funding, you could fund four more officers next year and still have fifty-four thousand dollars left over, if that makes sense.
To be clear, that's four in addition to the four we've always talked about, so eight for twenty-five.
And still have, have some additional money.
So that is two additional per shift, the two additional on the street.
Eight, eight would be two.
Two, two on the street.
Oh, did we determine if that moves our staffing? Will two additional on the streets move our staffing minimum up one?
Is that, so, you're talking about eight additional, so it was two per shift, and we'll be able to increase funding.
Well, that sells it to me.
Yeah, yeah. So.
How do we get there?
Well, I mean, it sounds like we're already there.
We're, we're, we're at fifty-four thousand dollars to play with.
Which ain't.
Just cuss down the discretion on your phone a lot.
Uh, board and commissioner request, so, there are two really big items on the board and commissioner request, those are salaries, the positions, there's two positions, or, or one position within the score request. The other requests alone are fifty-seven thousand four hundred. That also doesn't include the animal shelter food, which is twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-seven, I think she said twenty-seven, you know?
She said fifteen, plus ten for the cats, plus two thousand for.
Pest control.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Twenty-seven total.
Well, pest control, we can.
Oh, pest control is actually happening, according to Ronnie, and has been happening for the last six months.
Yeah, we do that. Um, that's why I didn't.
It's just a building.
Um, so, those are kinda like the big, big, uh, things that we have to figure out, um.
But the food becomes a recurring cost, right?
That's why.
Well, the fact that it hasn't been funded thus far, it's a problem.
I don't, I got a cat in the back, I'm gonna see if the food might need it.
Jeff wants, sorry, Jeff wants to understand why the animal services food has not been funded in the past.
Oh, I know that too.
It has been.
Well, I don't think.
It has been.
We were funding about ninety-three hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
And we reduced.
How much?
We were funding about ninety-three hundred dollars a year for food. And then that got reduced to twenty-two hundred dollars, I believe, in this year's budget.
Because historically, the food was donated, and because there was, the money had not been spent, that, that money would.
And it didn't go away, it went to vet professional services, so, in reallocation, I looked it up altogether. It looks like the majority of it was reallocated from a number of different places where they weren't spending money, to vet services where they were overspending every year.
So, there's a significant discrepancy, and, and what is actually happening on the ground versus what we have budgeted. So, there needs to be some checking in on those things.
Yes, but, but let me say this though. Your resources are either tax revenue fees, for example, or donations. And if the donations have been there, and they've been adequate to cover that, I can understand why they might wanna make, but here's the deal. If you budgeted that way to buy all the food a hundred percent, and you still were accepting donations, then you could, you could end up having money that you're allocating, you don't need, and I'm sure that would fall in the decision making.
Well, I think it's, uh, I, 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 I don't like that we have on, uh, frauds asking the community to help fund food. I mean, I think that's a city obligation to fund, we should never, we should never have to say, just like the fire department should never have to say, we need water in our fire stations, I'm sorry, but we have a budget, we need to, you know, it just, I'd rather not have to ask that, you know what I'm saying?
And I seen on Facebook a lot, that he asking for food.
Well, they're running out a lot.
I know, they're running out a lot.
And that's the problem.
It would be better for them to ask for help for adoptions, rather than trying to get money for food. So, I understand, we, we put it up on, on that list for at least to have that conversation.
If we buy the food, then we have control of the quality of the food, they said, that's some of the problem, is that they get donations of like specialty foods and, and things that they can't use, so they end up.
It was a great point you made.
Yeah. I think it's a really easy ask, I mean, simple, easy, common sense ask.
And I noticed here that, uh, the animal shelter advisory board has no, no budget at all, they don't get any money, they're not on.
So, so understand, um, they, they do not, um, most of our boards and commissions do not get any kind of funding, other than maybe buying t-shirts and training and some things like that. There are some like arts humanities where it, there's, there's a general purpose behind that, or strategy behind that. But we do not cash fund most of our boards and commissions.
Some of them have cash funding, like, um, the youth advisory council, they have funding for shirts for the events that they specifically sponsor and put on for their training, for their camp.
I think, I think now that they know that they can ask, next year will be a good opportunity.
Right, because they said to us, we didn't even know we could ask.
Right. So that will be something they'll have to do next year.
And I don't think the senior driver would ask for much, just for that quiet driver, that's it.
So.
And it's like this, thank you.
So, um. We have the four additional officers that, uh, on top of the other four, right? So that's, that's, um, what was that, three seventy-eight, uh?
Three eighty-two.
Three eighty-eight, sorry. Three two, and that's just four, so times two is, oh, does that, no.
That's eight.
No, that's the additional four, your four.
That's it, you realize that.
Yeah.
You actually have four. So if you do four this year, if you do eight this year, you're still gonna need four next year?
No, we're gonna need eight next year.
Gonna need eight next year.
How do we have fifty-four thousand left over when we only have two seventy-six?
Because it goes back to, when you move the equipment to the ARPA fund, it freed up another hundred and sixty. So it's two seventy-six plus the one sixty, minus three eighty-two gives you a balance of fifty-four thousand.
This means you're gonna pay for all the equipment for all eight.
Sixty-nine in ARPA funds then, right?
Four sixty-nine.
If you, if you were not willing to use the ARPA funds, then you're right, we'd still be upside down in the utility, in the general fund.
Right. I'm sure, you gotta use the, you gotta take away the cash reserve.
Um, so.
And that ARPA would be unallocated, right?
Three hundred and forty-one thousand of unallocated funds, fifty, uh, five hundred thousand of what we have as funding to cover shortfalls aren't in there. And then we had savings of twenty-two thousand from the twenty-four, which is that project that is completed.
Now, you gotta be careful with the grant for the lift, the generator for the lift station, and the price overage on that.
That's why I don't wanna get into that as much.
So, at this point, we're not proposing to dip into any of the one point seven million, and as you know, we already asked for a one point three million dollar.
Not that we're talking.
Yeah.
But the five hundred thousand, the five hundred thousand could help cover us if we don't get the grant. And we know right now, those generators are about two point four million versus the one point seven, it would help, it would be.
That's what I was talking about, it's a one point seven, it's over the two point four.
So, this is when we get, so, I think how we should do this is express our, what we'd like to see as a need in the budget, what we want to put in the budget. And then we look at how much overrun we have, and then talk about how we're gonna be covering it over.
I think you're right, Mayor, I mean, anything, let's just say, go back to the other slide. So, like if you were say, hey, I'd like to see, we, basically we just opened it up the floor.
Right.
I like to see this, I like, we'll just type it in there, and we'll make decisions until after everybody's gone through and had their chance to say, I like this or that. Then, then we'll know where we're at, and then we can make decisions on where to throw it back if we feel like we need to, is that fair?
Yeah, so, um, trying to think, do we go around the room one item at a time, or do we do multiple items at a time?
So, what, what, what we'll do sometimes, I know our groups, we'll just do, uh, one at a time, until we've, we've gone through everybody.
Okay.
Several times.
So, uh. Okay. What, what's one of your, can't we just let your. So, what do we have to work with? I, I mean.
The animal food to me is a, a no-brainer, that hasn't already been added, is just a default.
Yeah.
Then I, I think we need to take that into, to account of what our bottom line number is before we do more math. Because to me, that's just, that's twenty-five.
Put that in there.
We're doing that under ARPA or under general fund?
Whoa, 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 I, what about the general, and you said the budget's the same, you just reallocate your budget.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you spending on animal, what are you spending on vet services, it got respent? Just reallocated, it's not additional money, it's just reallocation of the budget within animal services.
It really is additional money because they were spending about, they, they were spending more than what they already had allocated. So they took a couple of different accounts and reallocated it to vet service, not only food, they took seven thousand dollars from food, and some little, a little bit of office supplies, and a little bit of this, and a little bit of that, and reallocated it to vet services.
And they're spending all that on debt, I'm sure.
Every diet that vet services plus them.
So they're looking straight up.
So they use some of the food money for the vet services?
They truly did a budget increase.
So do you need more?
Exactly, yes.
Do you need more money for the vets?
I don't think it this time, I think goes, if there's any contract increases and stuff, it's already been plugged in.
Yeah, okay.
The problem was, they reduced it for this year, and then that left them exposed for next year. And I think the point she made about the consistency with the food, I think makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
So, I, I know we say we don't need more money for them, but I wanna keep one thing in mind, and I told them this on Saturday. They need to keep tabs on what they're spending in terms of volunteer hours, in terms of donations, in terms of in-kind vet service stuff that they're doing for us. Because those are all things that if friends around animals didn't exist tomorrow, that the city is gonna have to absorb. And it is a big cost, because they are doing vet services for the city in some ways, they are providing food, and they are providing tons and tons of volunteer hours.
They, they had eighteen hundred plus volunteer hours year-to-date, which would put them on track on a monthly basis to provide, um, well over twenty-five hundred hours in the year, and a full-time employee is twenty-eight hours, so, yeah, they're really, really benefiting the city a lot.
Well, so, it looks like the fiscal twenty-three allocation for them is actually a decrease from the twenty-twenty-two revised budget. Whereas the twenty-two was an eighty percent increase over twenty-one, this year they're facing inflation and all of the products that they need to use, so.
They may have had some one-time funding in the previous year.
Oh, yeah.
Because they sold out one-time funding, and then we add back contract increases, so any department can do this, you know, based on that, that analysis. But, but I think what's been identified here is the more significant thing, which is the fact that we have reduced, we're over, we're relying on donations for food that is not consistent.
Well, and, and this will, if, if they don't utilize all of the twenty-five grand for food, then that's more money they can put into other areas, other needs in the shelter. You know, so at the end of the year, if they have a surplus, that's great for them, they can, I know y'all don't like it, but y'all like to put it back in the general fund.
Well, we do that, and we have a big wet top, so, yeah, I mean, it's a good strategy.
Okay, so he got mine, but, um, and we're not discussing the additional police officers, right? That's a dead deal.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm looking here at the list of the department requests, and something I think is important that has kind of been overlooked would be the, uh, the training budget increase for the fire department. I'd like to see that. Yeah, that's twenty-two thousand. That's the request, I mean, we can share the amount we saw, but I think we definitely need to give them some.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but isn't this list, sorry, the one that was just up there, isn't that prioritized?
Uh, no, um, they do prioritize like the top ten, did we prioritize all of them? Sorry, we did, yes.
So when I looked down that list, and I looked for fire in the left-hand category, there's like five or six other items for fire.
We'll get to some of those.
Okay.
Yeah, and a lot of them are on big.
We'll get to them, but, but there's, we'll get to that.
But there are some.
So, so let me say this, there, there are a couple ways to do it, first, we ask each department to prioritize their own list, and then we collectively come together. But I thought we only, we come up with like the top ten.
No, you did top ten.
Did we end up prioritizing every single last item?
We did the top. Okay, so we got, we got the, the training budget increase, Matt. Do you see any?
Yes.
Well, they're all outstanding, this is what's hard about the whole, it's what's hard about this puzzle every year.
This is a puzzle. Okay, I do, I do wanna say this, this, this list is not all, all prioritized. What we made them do, well, they, they submitted their item, we then took their top, their top, um, request on each one, and then the group prioritized that. But this is the, this is the whole population of everything that was asked for.
So the top ten is the top one of everybody's prioritized by the whole group.
Okay, can I ask the chief a question, Chief Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Which would you prioritize, the training budget increase or the NOX key system?
And what is that NOX key?
The NOX key system is pretty important because it leaves us vulnerable, right now the system, this, this is a system that tracks every time that key goes in and out of the truck. And that's pretty important to us right now.
So you would prioritize that over, okay, then I'm changing my mind to the NOX.
Yeah, I think if we prioritize the top two, but then that's the number one, everybody's number one, so we put number everybody's number two, and then everybody's number three, something like that, and then how we do?
We took a list of each department's top, and then ranked them one to ten.
You know what, is, uh, is, before Matt says anything, is the golf course, uh, fund calculated in?
Yeah.
All right, no, well, there you go.
Only the twenty-five thousand.
Not, not the usual source you mentioned.
The twenty-five.
Sorry, how much?
The twenty-five thousand is in there.
Twenty-five.
Thought it wasn't, I was gonna say here.
But you wanted a hundred thousand a year, right?
I, I did, but I know I'm not gonna get it. Um, you know, a lot of this stuff is, that's a one, chief, that NOX key, that's a one-time.
That's a one-time.
You know, to me, you know, you're looking at twenty-five thousand, and that's an operational increase is what animal services is asking for. You know, can argue that, this right here, your model shows using all of the ARPA money, right? Five hundred, set aside for overruns.
Not, we haven't used it all yet, um, if you go down to the bottom.
Well, there's, there's two hundred and something.
Just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
There's still four sixty-nine left in there.
Well, I'm sorry, there is a, uh, says unallocated three hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two. Well, I'm sorry, there is a, uh, says unallocated three hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-two.
Just wanna make sure I'm working out of the right handers.
So, so three, so those are the three items that made up the eight sixty-four that we're saying were available. If the five hundred thousand is off the table, then we're already in the negative.
See, that, that's where, and that's where I'm gonna throw a whole wrench in the whole deal. Is because, you know, if there's really, really big needs for ongoing funding, I think we all agree that the four additional officers is super, super important and a must. You know, we can go back and forth about how you fund, you know, the additional operating costs on, on the animal for food and things like that. But to me, I'm not comfortable spending, I can, I can justify the three forty-one, but I'm not comfortable taking the five million, the five hundred thousand on the shortfalls yet until we see how some of this grant stuff comes through. And maybe that's something that we come back to in a mid-year exemption or mid-year budget analysis to say, okay, this is where this came in, this is where this came in, that's a perfect time to fund the NOX key. Maybe we're halfway through the year and we're not in code red at the animal shelter. We've actually gotten some adoptions in, so we haven't used as much food as we are, so their budget is looking okay. Or maybe they're still in a code red, so we need to throw another ten grand in there for this. Um, that's my two cents, but what I don't wanna do is, we've planned long and hard for those, those generators. And by my calculation, if we get the full grant and it comes back in at the, uh, the two point four, is that what you said the new cost was?
Yes.
Two point four, that's almost gonna use up the entire shortfall. And we've, unless you have another funding source tucked away somewhere to be able to fund that, that has been a priority for a very, 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 very long time and we've made it that, that so. Um, so, I, I just do not, I know that there's a lot of needs on here, but I just would not, I'm just personally not comfortable giving up that five hundred thousand and we come back in six months and see, see how things are going. And maybe that's when we knock off some of this other one-time. But to me, if we do the four additional police officers, which I'm in favor for, ongoing wise, we're knocked out. It's up for fifty-four thousand.
Here's why I was wanting to go over our priorities and funding things first, is because the proposed budget proposes a six point nine cent decrease of the tax rate.
Yep.
Point nine cents is five hundred thirty thousand dollars, recurring cost. I'm not saying that's all, you know, we use all of that, maybe it's point five cents. But we're, I, I don't wanna use the five hundred thousand dollars either, so I, I recognize that there's a potential we're gonna have to eat into a little bit of that six point nine cents.
I'm perfectly fine, I didn't know that, that conversation's on the table, so.
That's why I was wanting to go through our needs so that we can look at the number and say, ooh, how are we gonna do that? Well, well, you know.
Well, take the five hundred thousand out and let's see where it is and then let's go around and get what people's asks are and figure out what that increase would be.
That's what I'm, that's what I have on my list.
I'm, I'm fine with the conversation.
That's why I wanna go through our, our needs and then come back and say, okay, here's our situation.
Well, my, my, my request is to take the five hundred thousand out, so let's see how far short we are already with just what's on there.
I agree, let's do that.
I didn't add anything, I took something away, sorry.
Well, you wanna add something?
No, not right now, I'll, I'll keep that for now.
You have a word, you got something?
Well, I had something that was a contingency, how's that? So, I, I, I agree with Matt, I don't see, I don't feel a pressing need to identify everything that we need to do in twenty-twenty-three by October one.
I'm saying, I'm saying those things that you do believe are a pressing need.
Well, there, there's one big one, you know, it was my big one when I decided to take this job on and that is to get some funding to start the Miller Road design. Now, that blows this budget here, but we have been talking the last several weeks about the possibility that we may get an allocation of funding from DART. Um, and it seems to me to be just about enough money to do the matching to the MCIP grant that is promised and enough to get us going down the design road, which would serve as seed money to actually let us go to some of the some county, state, and federal authorities and say, we've started this project, we're making it shovel-ready so that when the money comes around to be doled out to shovel-ready projects that we're there and ready to go, where we haven't been for twenty years.
You're right, you're, you're absolutely right, but
For this budget.
That's not this conversation.
Yeah, for this budget, I'm, I'm, I wanted to get it on the, on the record here today, that I think when that money comes back, there are, and we talked about the possibility it could be tied to transportation needs, that's clearly a transportation need, it's clearly an inter-local transportation need, so I think it would play well in that regard. Now, in terms of this. The pressing needs here, I'm really happy to not even have to ask about the police officers. Uh, getting to hire regular patrol is extremely important. Um, I drove by Target just yesterday and, uh, two-thirds of the force was at one stop.
Yeah, well, that's about two officers.
There were, there were three cars there. I know there's lots of pressing needs in here, um, some of these, I think, can wait a little bit. I did have a brief conversation with Chief Howard, um, I am concerned about getting started on the radio replacement. He's a little less concerned than I am, but those things can take time and I'd rather see us roll through it rather than, uh, over a period of time rather than a big lump sum and try to figure out how it works.
If I'm not mistaken, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not as dire because I think, and you'll know this, isn't there a grant opportunity out there for, uh, is it AFG or, um, something like that to purchase? Didn't we?
We've tried, we've tried, but it's not, um, it's very difficult.
So, so looking at it from a standpoint of we need to, to budget a certain amount over a period of, what, a couple, three years to get them all done, that's probably highest on my list, given that Jeff already stole my training.
What, what is that cost? So, what is that, if we do, if we do a multi-year basis? If we do a multi-year basis?
I think that was for a percentage, wasn't it, the one forty-nine?
That was already?
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's.
You just blew the budget, Brian. So, you wanna put it in there?
We said we would put it all in there.
Put it all in?
No, okay, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm with Matt on the idea we need to see how things shake out and plan literally to do a reassessment in three months or four months or five months.
Right, but I'm saying for, for right now, at this moment.
Right now, I'm good. Give me my three million dollars for Miller Road and I'm happy.
All right.
So, take out the radio replacement?
Put the three million in there.
Put the three million. I'll see your three million and raise it another two hundred and fifty-six. Uh, good, um, if Chief is okay, I will take it out for now and with the idea we can revisit it in a few months and see if we've got the funding out there, 'cause I'm with Matt that the five hundred, given where inflation has gone lately.
We're gonna have.
Some of what we budgeted, we're not gonna be able to afford because the prices are gonna be higher in three months.
I can imagine we're gonna have a mid-year budget discussion, let alone if the, uh, we're not, there's no way we're gonna hire eight officers. Probably ninety in the mid-year, we'll have a mid-year.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have one-time savings from that.
Just a little good news, just to pass on, uh, Chief, would you tell them about the people you hired today?
Oh, I, we're in six new officers. Who are certified in the state of Texas, so they'll go straight into.
Yeah, good job. And a little more good news, Ryan, tell us how many vacancies you have at Public Works.
Wow, is that a record?
Yes.
Is that a record?
Oh, you have to say it out loud.
We're down from eight to two.
Wow.
Yes, that's right.
And, and he says it's made to two, but remember it was higher than eight at one point.
Oh, yeah. They was thirteen, seventeen.
Yes, it's high as seventeen.
It was seventeen.
Well, good job, y'all.
How, how are we in parks?
We're currently down two, Eric had to step off for a call.
Okay.
They are currently down two.
Down two.
But they are doing interviews, so they will be hired.
Okay, you ready for me?
I'm ready.
I've been looking at, everyone is overlooking Public Works, what do you, what do you, Ryan? You have anything on Smiths?
We have, we have a position in there for the sunspot. And we put that position down at the bottom for the sunspot.
Oh, okay. 'Cause I was looking at, you have a lot of, you have a couple facilities deals here also.
Yeah, we have raises on all of our contracts, so, everything's gone up like you.
Yeah, everything's gone up. So, really, I'm just dancing, almost doing a happy dance for the police, okay?
Well, then I'm, I'm gonna throw in quite a few here.
So, you get one right now. Should we go back?
I'll go to, I'll go to, uh, I'll just go to these three and we'll just take.
Are you talking now, are you gonna be going to the, the boards or anything?
Yeah, well, that's one of them.
Well, I guess, I can work with that too. I am for this, for the seniors.
I, I understand what you're doing, Mayor, I really do, and I, I appreciate it, 'cause I know where you're going. Can I make a suggestion that we tweak it a little bit? Because to me, you go around a table like this, we all know, trust me, we, we go around long enough, we're all gonna give you what we want, because there's a lot out there. To me, it's easier and a little bit more efficient to say, okay, what are we willing to go up to or not reduce in the tax rate and figure out what that number is and then work to that? Because I think everybody probably has a number if we're willing to go to point nine or one cent or two cent. 'Cause if you keep going this way, you're gonna eventually get to the other way, it's just how it works when you do it this way. So, if you have a plan in your head of what you'd like to propose, I would recommend that you do that, 'cause I'm all for if you wanna take off that point nine cents, I'm all for if you wanna do a, a full cent. If you wanna have that conversation, to me, that's more fruitful to be able to work towards a final number of what we have than us to keep going around the room, 'cause trust me, we'll get on a roll and everything's important. A wet zone needs a new fence, I want another twenty-five thousand dollars for the golf course. I love what the boards and commission says, but is the boards and commission's request gonna offset what I can do for another one? I don't know until I know what we decide as a group of what we're gonna do on the tax rate.
Yeah.
So, to me, that has to be the first conversation. That's just a suggestion.
I, I, I'm good with that suggestion. My, my whole idea was that, uh, I wanna know exactly how much we were gonna go up to, but, but I get that, maybe that's, that's a better option. Um, okay, well, that's a bigger conversation then. So, point nine cents is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The proposed budget includes a six point nine cent rate reduction.
Yes.
Why don't you have to have a spreadsheet where we can kinda play with?
Yes.
This conversation.
You mean that, that spreadsheet?
No, the tax rate.
Oh, the tax rate.
And how.
How much more money you can get every time you add a half a cent?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm a spreadsheet guy, so I like, give something with some fields I can.
You think you could have a thing in your head on what your numbers are?
I think that's dumb question, so, we, we approved the maximum rate, what are, what rate have we got? That we've been working with.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, you wanna see what we have to play with.
Right.
Yep. And what you can go up to and what that means in dollars, hundred percent. And that's why it's a more fruitful conversation.
Personally, I don't know that I'd be willing to go. Uh, number nine cents, reduction on the reduction, point nine cents. Reduction on the reduction.
Cause the difference.
Somebody needs to run it the board.
Uh, thank you, Wendy, this is out of the board in there.
Yeah, 'cause.
Yeah, she's got all her spreadsheets pulled up on, on the, on her laptop, but.
They're just sub-timed.
Thank you.
Wait, what was the, uh, proposed is?
I'm thinking, speaking long.
So, a couple other questions, I think that dovetail with this. What, what specific rate is this budget, proposed budget built on?
Six point nine cent reduction.
Yeah, if we do nothing else, then there will be a six point nine percent.
Six point nine cent.
Cent reduction.
Okay, how does that impact?
And what is that rate?
Yeah, six seven five, six six zero.
Yeah, six seven five. And what was the vote, what was, what did we vote on for the map?
Six nine nine?
Six nine. Uh, six nine nine, four two nine.
That's what we needed.
That's what we needed, okay.
And then, I was.
You got much as two pennies.
How, how much of the unused increment does that absorb?
Um, the, the six nine nine, four two nine, which is the maximum that council said, um, is with all of the increment, which is four p's. Point four seven to be exact, so a little before and after.
And I believe you had mentioned before that if, we're not, we don't lose any increment this year if we don't use it.
Correct.
That doesn't happen until the next year.
Correct.
Yep.
How much do you wanna preserve for next year, knowing you need to hire eight officers next year too?
That, that's kinda what I was gonna, and the, the last question, this may not be able to be calculated easily, is what is the impact on our average homeowner's taxes that has a two hundred thousand dollar house?
So, that's, um, a hundred fifteen dollars at the low end and a hundred fifty-eight, I think, at the high end.
Yes.
Per year.
Hundred fifty-eight.
Yeah, so in other words, at, at roughly the four point seven cents, it's about a hundred.
Fifteen?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty.
And at the six point nine, it was like a hundred fifteen or something like that. That was the point we were making, no matter how you.
Are there two hundred thousand dollar houses in the city anymore?
I do wanna make this clear. You don't have four pennies to work with because we've already used half of the four pennies.
Right, yeah.
So, you have essentially two pennies. Or the difference between the four point seven and the.
Yeah, you've got, right, right out two, but I wouldn't go the whole two pennies in.
Personally, I'm, I'm, I, I will, I can consider a point nine cent rate reduction on the reduction.
Which would be addition to the reduction.
Which would be what rate?
Which would be, uh.
Be six cents instead of six nine.
So, it'd be a six cent reduction since it's one.
Be a, yeah.
Six cents instead of six point nine.
Yeah, guys, I, I wanna make sure of that, because I, I misquoted myself. A hundred fifteen dollars in additional cost to the average homeowner, even at the maximum reduction, six point nine cents, a hundred eighty-eight dollars if we only did the four point seven cents.
Okay, so, the question is, what is the, uh?
Rate the budget's built on?
The rate of the six cent instead of the six, six point nine cent reduction.
The budget's built on six seven five, six six oh, right? Yep, essentially, if you take, if you get nine tenths of a cent out, you could add additional, how much additional revenue.
Still have a six cent reduction on the six point.
And you're still, and you're still preserving a penny for next year.
Would make it what rate?
To F P.
Yeah.
But that'd be a total of five hundred and thirty thousand dollars of recurring money that we have access to if we were to do a point nine cents reduction.
It gets you, that would let you get a bunch of that one-time stuff or one note position.
So, you're talking about something like that? The budget's based on, basically sixty-seven and a half cents, you're talking about instead going to a sixty-eight and a half cents.
Yes. You'd have, you'd have roughly two point four cents before you would.
That's not my question. My question is, what is the rate, the, the, the tax rate, is it, uh?
At what level?
At six cent reduction.
Point six eight.
I'll add six, so, take your, um, yeah, and then five.
About points, it would be point six eight.
No, that's what, that's the question.
It would go to sixty-eight point five.
Sixty-eight point five.
And if we, and Blake, if we go with, um, what you were saying, point nine percent over what the budget rate is, that puts us at sixty-eight point four six.
Right.
So, we're.
So, that would be an additional five hundred thirty thousand dollars recurring funding.
Two point four cents, you have two point four cents to play with.
And the, and the difference for a three hundred thousand dollar house with no homestead exemption is twenty-seven dollars.
Yep.
Between the two.
So, that's what I'll consider, what about, what about y'all?
Yep, see, that's the question I wanna have, I'd go up to that for sure. I'd do a full penny, you essentially have two point four.
Well, I, I might.
You had two point four pennies to play with, but you like, you like round numbers.
Well, there's a, I'm, there's a strategy there that I'll tell you later.
So, reducing the current tax rate by six pennies, which brings us at point six eight five, then produces, um, additional revenue to spend of six hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
I thought I was told five hundred thirty thousand a minute ago.
She just reworked the numbers.
She worked it on the, the tax rate calculation sheet, so that.
That actually gets you six hundred and thirty-four thousand. That actually gets you six hundred and thirty-four thousand.
She went over her spreadsheet and pushed the crunch button.
Yes.
And just for those who watch the tape later, for a three hundred thousand dollar valuation you're paying taxes on, that is twenty-eight dollars a year. For a four hundred thousand dollar valuation, that is thirty-seven dollars a year, and for a five hundred thousand dollar valuation, that is forty-seven dollars a year. Fifty-six dollars for six hundred thousand, sixty-five dollars for seven hundred thousand, so you don't have that many, eight hundred and above, so it's, it's a miniscule amount.
That's the difference between the point six seven and the point six six.
And the budget rate right now. So what this, we're talking about adding to?
Right.
The, the budget burden, yes.
Good question. I would be willing to have that conversation until it's where it's at, yes.
Okay.
I'd be on favor of that.
Is that, is there any opposition to that approach?
To the conversation?
For a conversation, that's what this is.
We always have a conversation.
I mean, I struggle with it a little bit, only knowing how much people are already struggling, and how much more funding the city's getting just from home valuations increasing so much. And retaining part of that increment for next year, because it might very well be needed if we find ourselves in a real pickle if the financial picture gets any darker than it already seems to be.
To us, thirty-seven dollars, thirty-seven dollars, that doesn't sound like such, that's not advantageous. You know, there's six cents that's gonna go up, there's, everything's up, everything. So, I don't think we should just do it lightly and say, oh, you know, we can fund everything, it depends on what we're gonna fund.
That's why I kind of, that's why I went with my initial approach, that this is.
I totally agree with you, Deb, but it makes your, I bet it makes your, it might not, but it might make what you recommend is what you want. Now, instead of going around the room five times, we really, you really get to go around the room maybe once or twice, depending on what you pick. So it makes you be a lot more picky about, about, because you've seen all the asks and the needs that are out there, because just, because, and the reason we have these conversations is, yes, it's, price is going up for everybody, that includes everybody that this city serves and what it costs to serve those residents.
I mean, the fact is, if we don't utilize five hundred thousand in ARPA funding, we are at a negative balance if we were to hire four additional officers, so.
Exactly right.
We've gotta have some additional funding, I mean, if, so.
If we're using it to hire the additional officers, I can, yeah.
But also, we have to fund the board commission needs, the animal shelter food needs.
We don't have to fund everything that everybody asks for.
No, we don't, we certainly don't, but there are some things there, right?
I'm saying we're not. Right, I'm close.
There's a word that was mentioned during the public input that I think is really important to reiterate, and that's stewardship, because only a very small fraction of this is any one of ours' contribution to the city's coffers.
I think we, I think we all understand that, um, but I think we have to consider the fact that if we don't have, if we don't have additional funding, then we won't be able to hire the four additional officers, and we won't be able to do some of the needs, the other needs like.
Well, remember, you could hire the four additional officers out of what you have, if we're willing to use some of the ARPA money for the equipment.
Yeah, I'm, that's me.
You can use the money for that.
And you're not dipping into the five hundred thousand ARPA cost over on that.
I think I was rephrasing, we can hire four additional officers.
Oh, then, no, in this, they took it on. Yeah, that's funny.
I'm just saying, there's a way to fund the four officers, if you're willing to use some of the ARPA funding, and stay, still stay within, still have fifty thousand left over from the ongoing funds in the general fund.
Right.
Hmm, no.
It's about thirty thousand for sure.
Yeah, you take the five hundred.
The animal food and the fire not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And take those up.
The ARPA numbers, so.
Oh, yeah, because we moved out the five hundred. Yeah, we could be bad.
You have to have the five hundred back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could get to a.
I feel like we're going in circles, this is why we need to talk about what.
Well, this is why this conversation you have first, and I think that it's a middle-of-the-road decision. So I agree with you, you gotta be good steward, you got all of those things, but you also gotta be good, you also gotta make sure that you have the services. You gotta make sure that the dog food is there when the dogs have it, and you're not, you guys just said how strongly you feel about that, and we also feel strongly about the four officers. So, that's a good, to me, it's a good middle ground where you're, you're still preserving over two cents going into next year.
Whatever you have to do to get those officers and to get those dogs there, and cats, um, you know, I'm absolutely willing to look at that. But I think we need to differentiate between the needs and the wants, because there are a lot of wants and needs and wants.
Hey, I'd really like to hear your priorities, because you haven't really had a chance to share.
So, uh, there's about fifty-seven thousand four hundred in board commission requests that I'd like to see funded. Um, let me go to that list, we'll go, uh, actually, I have to go to, um.
Can you go, yeah, you go to the next speed.
That's, yeah, great. Yeah, so that is, um, obviously, the golf fund, oh, that's already in there, take that back.
That's an additional.
Oh, that's an additional?
That's an additional.
Yeah, I'm not fighting for the extra addition this year.
Take that out, my apologies, um, the RCC additional fifty thousand. Uh, the art maintenance fees is already in there, right, ten thousand is already.
Which one?
Which one?
Art maintenance.
Yeah, so we have fifty thousand budget, ten thousand.
It's additional.
So, art maintenance fees at ten thousand, park advisory, type four.
Yeah.
R D E I C, people who are, supposed to be staff.
I'm listening, so R C C, R D E I C.
At fourteen hundred.
Parks, God.
All right, so those are the board commission, so whatever I said was.
So the two thousand for the R D E I C.
This would make it six.
Right, operational increase, places of two thousand.
But not the coordinator.
No, I didn't put that in there.
Can you repeat that on the left side of the room?
We can't, we're, no, we've got. Repeat what you said.
Okay.
Okay.
So you have the R C C.
That's fifteen thousand dollars, art maintenance fees is ten thousand dollars, parks advisory board, which is a creation of an operational budget of four thousand dollars.
Just thirty-two thousand.
Uh, Rallet diversity inclusion, um, which is just their board functioning, is an additional two thousand. And A H C operational increase.
Wait, you want to.
To fourteen hundred.
So bottom set.
Yes, that screen right there, no, you were on the screen. The boards of commission request right there, that were the ones that he just said, highlight those.
R C C down.
So that's thirty-two thousand.
Right.
I thought you said.
It was because I kind of made another comment there.
Oh.
Fifty-seven thousand.
Five in addition.
Um, the other, the other thing is, I would like to see, because I hear about it all the time, about how, why did we get rid of the fifty-fifty sidewalk program? I, I do want to see fifty thousand dollars added.
But we didn't get rid of it.
No, I know, we didn't, but we did, we didn't, but we did, yeah.
Is that a potential use for the Rallet housing finance money?
Um, I don't think that was the, was that the, that was for housing rehabilitation, not sidewalk.
Yeah, but you could, but you could take fifty away, because I think there was forty or fifty to Salvation Army, you could foot flop them.
I mean, for the, the income-based sidewalks.
Yeah, Salvation Army.
Because I'd like to see fifty thousand dollars for, for income-based sidewalks, fifty thousand dollars for. Well, one of the very few cities already that doesn't, that doesn't pay for sidewalk maintenance, we don't consider that a city need.
Everybody who knows here is like.
And so, I think we've gotta do something for, I think a thousand is nothing compared to what the true costs are in the city if it were to actually, we were considering that a city asset. So I think that's a minimal.
How is that even handled?
I love, I love your tips, I know of at least two people who have been injured walking this off.
What was it?
I'm sorry.
Fifty thousand dollars for fifty-fifty program.
So thirty-one thousand. Big award. Fifty thousand for fifty-fifty sidewalks.
That was thirty-two.
That was for, yeah, that's.
Well, fourteen hundred comes out of the hotel fund, so that plus fourteen hundred comes out of the hotel fund, so, if my math is right, it's thirty-one thousand dollars for boards of commission.
Okay, and then, um, everybody knows these mediums that we have are a nightmare. They're ugly, they're so ugly, and they're such a maintenance mess. Um, so it's, you know, what do we want our city to look like?
Beautiful.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So, we got some, I asked for some quotes, the parks got some quotes, um. Also downtown is one of those, we met with the downtown association, they kicked me in the rear about our landscaping, and they were like, uh-uh, fix that. So, I'd like to see, um, it'd be thirty-one thousand dollars for Highway sixty-six median, which would include, um, replacing dead plants and putting in rocks, river rocks, in certain areas that, where it's basically all mulch. Because all the mulch, there were plants there, and they kind of die away and diminish, we never replace them. Um, that would decrease the maintenance, uh, and these plants would also not be the kind of plants that were there to die.
Yeah, something native that.
They would be native, and the rocks would also decrease the amount of planting area, which reduces. So that's more of a one-time cost than a recurring.
I think plants are a recurring cost.
Well.
What was, what was dying at first is now drowned.
That's very true. That's very true.
I mean, what about landscaping?
That would be a much harder, that would be a much larger expense, because then you'd be redoing the entire median, and that would be like a million dollars.
Have we had any conversations with K R V about what their plan has to ask?
They, that's not, that's not the funding, that was green ribbon funding that paid for the median.
Right.
They got a G C A A award, which is not greener than funding.
And they, they are starting their meetings, I did talk to Martha this week, um, they are gonna start meeting, they're gonna leave Parks and Rec in so that they can come up with two or three projects, that they would then bring to council with a recommendation for council's approval for the G C A A money, so they've already started having those conversations internally. Last time, I will tell you that G C A A money, I am almost positive had to be on hardscapes, not landscapes, so we had walls that came from G C A A and landscape that came from green ribbon.
So those entry monuments were G C, G C A A, greener than, you know.
But I did talk to Martha this week, they are working on putting together their plans, and they'll get with Parks and Rec, and then it'll come to council.
But I did ask them, I said, if they could use some of that to fix the mediums.
Well, we just paved over where those plans were.
Like, and I did have that conversation.
That was thirty-one, that was for the mediums, right, for downtown, I, there's something different there, that'd be a maintenance, an ongoing maintenance. They'd get out from parks, who already has a hard time maintaining some of these things, and then it would go on a maintenance schedule, kind of like, you know, the Dart platform, where they have the landscaping, they'd contract that out. So that way, we have some focus in downtown that's more unique, more appealing, so that, I mean, I know Libby will advocate for this strongly. I mean, we, they were pretty disappointed that we didn't.
You think it's good.
Take, um, take downtown a little bit more seriously, and so that cost would be sixty thousand dollars.
And that's for, what, would that be native plants also?
That would be replacing, or putting in plants that are, you know, you know how we have those planters and.
Yeah, I just don't want to put in things that are high maintenance and hard to keep on.
They're not gonna do that, parks ain't gonna do that, um, and then, uh, fixing.
There always is some seasonal color needed in fairness, you know, like we do this at the R C C, they have yuccas, they have some of those native plants, they have a lot of rock beds, but there still has to be color, and some of that is annual plants that are in little planters and different things like that, just to cause that color pop. So I suspect that's what they're quoting.
And that will also be, they will, they will do that, not the city, and there's also, a lot of that money is fixing the irrigation issue, so a lot of that money is one-time. Um, because apparently, pretty much all the irrigation there is not working.
Not working, and I'm hearing the same thing around the parks too, that, that, that park's irrigation technician had a lot of appeal for, you know, basically saving us money, because if it breaks now, we either got people who aren't qualified to work on, or we gotta go hire someone and pay them probably twice what we would pay.
We have a couple of licensed irrigators, but they're also part of the guys that just make things happen, so they have to stop what they're doing and go and do that.
So, while landscaping is not a need, it is, what do we want our city to look like, right? What is, what do we want, sixty-six is a major arterial, do we want that to be representative of the city, a really ugly dead median?
Yeah, you're, you're reflecting my, my own thoughts in that, 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 and all you people have bad alleys, forgive me for saying this, but when, when a businessman comes to town to decide whether they're gonna put a business here, they're not driving down the alleyways, they're driving down the major thoroughfares, they're driving through downtown, and they want to see a place that is attractive where they're gonna put their business, is an incentive to draw economic development.
And to keep people from coming back and not feeling like the city just doesn't really care about the sustainability.
I'd love to see us take all the telephone poles out.
Oh, that.
Start talking.
Anyway, I just wanna say, we have so many activities downtown. It would be nice to have a presentation downtown, because we get a lot of people that's not from Rallett coming here. Because I already started visiting a lot of people, I'm a little stranger, and they tell they're from X Y Z city. And they said, I didn't know this was going on down here, I said, mm-hmm, I'll be back, it's okay, come on back. But in the meantime, I'm walking downtown, looking at the, everything that's down here from Look to See.
No, and then when you have cities around us that, you know, like, well, you see Garland, their downtown is gonna blow ours up out of the water.
Yeah.
Rockwall, they have their own maintenance team that keeps up with it, I mean, we're kind of like, just kind of like, if it's dead, we throw it away, and then we don't put anything in it.
We need to decide to compete or not.
That's kind of the thing.
So you're up to one hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
There you go. Those are my initial, I mean, I think.
I mean, that, that would not take the whole point nine.
No, it wouldn't, so that's why.
Can we look at a lower?
Yeah.
Can I, can I circle back then, yeah, so we talked about, we talked about a penny above what the budget was based on, is there a reason why we can't go a half a cent above?
We can, absolutely.
Reserve that half to Jeff's point, that, because we're gonna have to, to fund additional officers next year.
I was just saying, when I, when I said point nine percent, it was because I didn't know what, oh.
That's a good starting point.
So, I'm, obviously.
And a half a cent does.
I'd be happy to go way below point nine percent, as long as we can afford these things, have a balanced budget.
Let's see, we gotta think about the offices.
Yeah.
But it's A B.
Yeah, so going below the point nine percent will keep our, a lot of our increment for next year.
Can I say something?
Does that?
Do you want me to add those dollars, we're sort of going to the tax rate of point six eight five, which is adding, it's a six, six penny decrease from the current tax rate.
But we're not.
We're talking about. Right, we're talking about.
Basically, that dollar amount that you see there, subtract that from the six point nine cent, and see what that reduction is.
One sixty-eight?
Yeah, we would probably want to have the thirty to cover, to your point, to retain the entire five hundred thousand.
That was already pulled out.
This has that, this has that. Well, then we need to do the full two hundred thousand on the bottom right, not, because the thirty's already.
Yes, he's too short. Yeah, you're two hundred short, right? Right. Yeah, so you gotta, you gotta get, you gotta figure out what percentage to get to the two hundred, right?
So, we're right at two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Which is point four cents, I think.
So half of it.
What do y'all think?
Point four cents. So point four cents over his budget, right?
Do you? Does that include the seniors and the ski security?
I can do that.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Does it include the senior, I mean, does it include the senior and the house?
So, if I may.
Score, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we sent this.
I was just asking, because it was on some of the lists of things they were thinking about. It's the only thing that they talked about being a priority that is not there yet.
Okay, it doesn't include score.
And the key.
Oh, it does.
It doesn't include the key, it doesn't include the sixty thousand dollars for score.
Sixty thousand, nor does it include the additional twenty-five in the capital reserves, or the, uh, diversity coordinator.
Well, we.
I'm just saying, any of the things that are above the blue is not included.
For the board's exemptions.
I, I do, we're just clarifying what is and what's not, that's all.
I, I, yeah. A quick question, how bad is the fence at the wet zone?
It's maybe eighty, yes.
So, do we have, do we have another way to pay for that?
How much is it?
Ninety-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, you can round it, you can round it up to a hundred, once you actually get it paid for.
Is that a, is that a whole fence?
It's an entire, entire.
Right, iron fence around the entire.
Yeah, but an entire perzer fence, I mean, it's been there twenty-two years, how many, you know?
Right, right.
It's probably gonna be right at a hundred when we get a new quote and we get it installed.
And it's a, it's a raw diamond style.
She's really loving it.
Oh, I know it is, and I know how bad those fences are.
So we're gonna have, so, so we have the point four cent scenario, which doesn't include score and the fence. So now let's make another scenario, scenario, scenario B.
I think you could, you could have a second scenario that, not everybody may agree with this, but you could include both the D E I C coordinator and score and the webzone fence. That is approximately four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If I divide that by five eighty, which is a full cent, I get seventy-two cents, roughly, seventy-two to seventy-three cents.
You are starting to mix ongoing and one-time costs, so.
How, how did you get four hundred and seventy-five?
And that's something to do with things, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that's a hundred and twenty here, plus, would you say?
Webzone's a hundred.
We got a hundred in the wet zone.
And that's, and that's a one-time cost.
Two twenty, plus the two hundred that you're on.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
And also, what I wanted to say about, if we had a coordinator for one board, we gotta have a coordinator for all boards.
Well, I think.
I'm not a favorite of that.
I'd rather have an irrigation coordinator, I don't think we're big enough yet for more than.
No.
Okay, so take that out, take out the coordinator.
Can I, can I clarify on that, that is not for our board, that is for the city, and the city is not for the board.
Yeah, no, I agree, it would be for the, it would be for the city, and I, and I agree that at some point that's gonna be needed, but.
It's gonna be needed, but not there.
I think, I think I've heard the majority of councils say that, that there's not interested in that, I know.
Okay, so if we subtract that, I get sixty-two cents over the budget, right?
Or adding score and score a thousand for.
Sixty, you mean? Point six, point zero?
Six two, pan, sixty-two cents. You were, you were talking about, did they look at Dallas County at all for those services?
You're talking about point zero six nine cents.
Counseling services?
Zero points.
Or zero point six two?
Yeah, zero points.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Other side, yes.
Right.
Yeah, sorry. I just. I know you're a stickler for details.
See, Jeff's saying the sixty thousand is a, two, like you could do thirty, and it would serve this many people, or you could do sixty and it would serve this many people, then you.
I think it's sixty.
Sixty across the board.
He adds sixty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I should know if this is a scalable number, sometimes.
So what are, what are, what are we looking at there?
Two sixty-two, sure.
Well, it was, uh.
In his message, he did say, this would be so much.
The maximum rate.
It was sixty, it was sixty.
This adds extra money.
Yeah, it was sixty, sixty people, fifty-five dollars a session, ten to twelve sessions.
Okay, what is our new rate reduction scenario?
What he's doing, that, that's not, that's not. See, he told us sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay.
I have very good memory.
You know why? Because when you leave here, it'll feel really good.
We're at three fifty-nine, I get sixty-eight.
Six seven. So.
I got, I don't know if that's right, but.
Point six eight?
I wanna know the second.
Brian, let me ask you a hypothetical. Could the, uh, could the, uh, fence for wet zone fall into C I P? What would that change C I P?
So we would have to, um, all take three grand dollar bills, we would have to cut something else a hundred thousand dollars.
Or we would?
It was on.
Originally, they were thinking, maybe we could work it into the ninety thousand annual allotment.
Yeah.
But, but that one, they would blow their whole money for a whole year if we were to use that as a.
Okay, so just, uh, that makes sense.
I know a real cheap fence guy.
Did we get that?
I'd talk about that, yeah.
We're trying to work boundaries here.
You're good. So we're just waiting. No, that's it, right, that's scenario B.
So now we're at point six eight one.
Uh, we're figuring it out.
He's trying to follow him through a spreadsheet, so we make sure it's exactly.
Two different roads to get to, right, two different roads to get to the same answer.
Exactly.
I'm confused now.
I love this stuff.
Okay, um. All right, I'm, I'm, this is, I'm confused again. So over on our C I P schedule here, under our general fund capital maintenance program, we list art program, fifty thousand dollars per year.
That's the purchase of arts.
Okay, and over here, on the boards and commissions reports, we have A H C, art acquisition, C I P, fifty thousand.
That's an additional.
So this is already in, right, here, additional.
Yes, yes. If it's something, right, that they get every year, it rolled over. So on one of those lists is this rolled over, Robert and Wendy had it up earlier. This is what they ask for, this is what they get every year, and this is the addition. I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me, it's one that we did for June.
Well, okay, I'm, I've been looking, I've been looking at this on the assumption that this is, this is O and M, this is the boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Yes. Additional.
So.
So there's a current funding column, which is what we gave in twenty twenty-two, and then there's a requested funding column, which is for twenty twenty-three. If that is funded.
And then that's supplemental funding.
Right.
But my, my point is, if it's in the C cash C I P, we don't need O and M money for it. Fifty thousand dollars a year in cash C I P.
So, so it's already funded, and that, those requests that were up there are above that, they automatically fund the fifty, right, Jeff, I'm almost positive.
Cool, well, I think the four.
Forty, yeah.
Right.
Brian, what page are you on?
Uh, one twenty-five.
Yeah, they automatically fund our standard, they, they, we automatically funded forty, this year they asked for fifty, which was a ten thousand dollar difference.
But that's for art acquisition.
And they need this.
Right.
Right.
That's how the fifty came up.
So the, this is the ten, it's the original, it's the additional ten, the fifty is down there.
But why are we adding that into our O and M costs when it's already in our capital budget cost?
Capital's fifty, art acquisition, that's for additional, that's for additional ten.
So we're talking a hundred thousand?
It's not capital C I P, it's.
For me.
Isn't it, where do we count for?
Fifty.
Well.
It's capital expenditure.
They get forty, plus they get ten in maintenance, that's your fifty.
Right, okay.
And they wanted an additional ten.
They want an additional.
And it was already in the budget here, the full fifty?
Yes.
Yes.
So why are we adding ten?
They're not doing it more here, because that was on the.
They're asking for additional ten.
Additional ten.
But the highlighted column was what we've already put in the budget, right?
I don't want that.
Uh, do you have?
Go to your, go to your tab, combine that thing, this one.
Forty.
All right, so here's, here, okay.
Yeah, fifty.
If we do the blue, it includes their extra question.
Well, I think that they're.
He's trying to tell you.
No, I'm sorry, thank you, I think, it looks like they dropped.
It's a little flag.
It's actually missing.
Where are you?
No, 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 the ten thousand, third one down, that's your extra ten. He's, Brian is asking, why would we do the extra ten? And that was the mayor's proposal to do everything in blue.
It's already in the budget in cash C I P.
Fifty's in budget, they wanted another ten for total of sixty.
It says on here, it says on here, it says on here forty.
That's the current funding for twenty-two, if you look in the next column, it's fifty for twenty-three, there's two separate lines.
Right, and what I'm saying is fifty was already budgeted in cash C I P.
They want ten, they want ten.
They want sixty?
They want sixty.
Sixty, yeah.
Yeah. They want sixty?
They want sixty.
Yes. I don't see sixty anywhere.
Well, so in the, in the requesting column, in the requesting column, there's two separate lines, there's one for ten for maintenance and there's one for fifty for acquisition. So that's sixty, Brian, fifty, okay, right, right here, that's the fifty. Art acquisition goes from forty to fifty, that's an additional ten.
Additional ten.
Yeah, our maintenance is up here, that's, that's ten, right.
Well, there you go, all right.
Okay.
Forty to fifty, that's worth the ten.
I did, it's not, I'm not identifying it here. All right, okay, Wendy, apparently we're losing our minds the more we wait.
Later, give us, this number not in the budget, but that fifty thousand, right, you know, that, it's a forty thousand.
Yeah, we get the rate.
I said fifty thousand. Fifty thousand. They're asking for additional ten, we're on the.
Yes, because.
So let's, let's do this, so it's already been, so.
We don't need twenty, sixteen, seventeen, or eighty.
Fifty, that's a good shit.
So that might. Oh, uh, can you, uh, well, it depends, that's they are.
Well, yeah.
So, council, if I may, I, I think we ultimately have to make a decision about the mural wall on sixty-six, and if that's something we wanna do or not. And if it's not something we wanna do, we're making a decision by not doing anything, not funding it, right? But in my experience on arts and humanities, the prior council told us, told them, told the arts and humanities commission to come back with ideas, and we did. We kinda understood what the cost was then, and council now has to either decide that we're prepared to spend that kind of money, which is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, probably more now with inflation. Or leave it as is and, and make a decision to just stick with what we got.
I'm not prepared, me, I'm not prepared to spend it out of the general fund, but I'd like to hear what we can do with the G C A money. Because I think there may be an opportunity to utilize some of that for the sound wall. And then if that doesn't work, then next year, we consider it safe, because there's that question out there that we may have, we, there may be an opportunity to fund it out of G C A. I don't wanna tie down money from this budget to the.
Oh, right.
Is, uh. Mark it four.
I do not.
I walk with the chair.
Yeah.
And, uh, something.
Run, quick!
I'll, to be honest, I really said that, something I wanted to discuss all in my mind, I say, hey, do you mind making sure this is the least part of the discussion? Maybe it would be a qualifying topic, I'm happy to do that, she and I've been talking.
Yeah, I think, I think you at least gotta ask, I would be a hundred percent on board with you on that, if they're on board with you.
So it'll just post public discussion all along, so we kinda know where G C A is and where it falls in the rank, and I'll, I'll, I'll get in my mind and ask for that. Or ask them at least to consider that in their, in their G C A.
Guess how much, how much are they getting at?
They keep.
How much are they?
It was two six, two six to your two seventy.
Oh, yeah.
Well, then we'll have some money looking at these things.
Four.
So. Sure.
No, we ain't doing red, we ain't doing that. We're gonna have a conversation later on about the Raleigh code.
I wanna paint it.
I suppose it's all that code.
I wanna paint it red.
We'll have a work session about.
Like an old story.
We're gonna have a work session with colorers.
Huck, was it Huck Finn was out whitewashing the fence, convinced his friends that it was a game.
Get the Guinness World Records books, but having the longest Texas flight, would you attend to them?
There you go. What's the current, what's the current record?
I'm sure one for that is not working. Everything's bigger in Texas.
They have a budget to build the wall.
Oh, my God. Everybody said our line item for the wall.
Mike, you, you probably thought we'd be done, right?
I knew you wouldn't be done.
Yeah. We're just waiting on, uh.
We're waiting on the, on the number.
The new tax rate based on the.
Hey, I like this, uh, multi has fire response, I'm gonna teach it to paint.
You make drones and fire fires now, I think they make drones and they.
Hey, council?
Unfortunately, those can.
The other thing that, um, I think is important that we discuss is, and I think we forgot to say, it's, it's not gonna affect this budget, but it is something that will affect the next budget, essentially, is, uh, fire apparatus authorization to order. Uh, we don't pay, we don't start paying on apparatus until we take delivery. Right now, the E T A for delivery, if we order, is two and a half. Two, so almost two and a half years.
Jeez.
Two years, two years. So, that really wouldn't affect us until twenty-five, really. So, I'd say that we consider giving the authorization to move forward with the order, it won't financially impact this budget. And then, uh, then that would be for the order of utility trucks and light air truck.
How long?
Um, well. The what, it's five hundred ninety, so that would be the next budget.
That's, that's what that range.
And then the tiller is about two hundred thousand dollars here, and the lighter truck is about sixty thousand dollars here. Yeah.
And then red, what was that?
I'll have to check.
Uh, sixty-two, seven eighty-one, it's got here for the light and air truck. This is listed as a twenty-three total cost, and it's got two hundred fifteen.
That impacts this.
So.
Well, well, it's in F Y twenty-two budget request.
So, you wanna catch me up then?
I'm sorry.
So on, on this, this list, which I printed earlier, it does show, it says an F Y twenty-three total cost, but. And it shows as a capital lease, so if we order, do we start paying the capital lease at point of order?
No, we, we don't start anger.
Is that the same for both vehicles?
Um, we will pay if we take delivery, but the light and air truck will come in. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I mean, twenty twenty-four.
Well, let's give them a break, and say, ask the.
So is that a, because it's not a budget impact, is that a discussion for today, or is that a discussion for?
That, that's just, because it's in this budget book, it's just trying to figure out if council is willing to get the authorization to move forward with the order of it. So.
But, but the point is, though, is that there would be no funding in twenty-three for it, and what you're essentially committing to is funding in twenty-four.
Correct, yeah.
So is that a separate agenda item in the twenty-three budget?
Yes, you would have to, not in the budget, what you would have to do, you would.
Where?
You would approve a resolution at a later point, order.
That was my point, yes.
We would turn that into a purchase requisition.
Cause we're, cause what we're considering today is decisions around the twenty-three budget, this is a later budget, this is, that's a separate resolution.
But it's in this budget as a request, so it is.
So I can talk about it.
Correct, I'm trying to, I'm trying to say that we can talk about it, because it's in this budget, as a request, but it won't impact this budget, it'll impact.
But we need to talk about it because of the long lag time.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we're really after, it's, 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 it's kinda like what we talked about with the schedule change, is needing lead time to create a marketing and education campaign. On this, it's, it's a lead time for equipment that, you know, we don't, we have to order now even to have it for twenty-four. We, we wait to twenty-four, then we have to wait another eighteen months.
We need to do it.
So i- is, are we good to get kinda the head nod and then we'll have a resolution in front of us?
We'll bring you then the bid and, and get you to order it.
Okay.
I'm here with this.
Okay.
Speaking of the schedule change, do we want to talk about the animal shelter?
Uh, that's a good, uh, do, do we wanna go ahead and talk about the animal shelter?
So, so let me say this, I think we figured out the building inspection deal, um, so that we would be open Monday through Friday for inspections, right? We would do the inspections Monday through Friday, so we did figure that one out. And out of his three people, he'll stagger them in the shifts, so that, uh, even though some of the rest of the building might be closed, inspections, we'll still be doing inspections on Fridays.
Yes.
Okay. So for the animal shelter, that, uh, it, it, I saw some scuttlebutt on that over the past day or so. So, um, remember, we will have people there every day, seven days a week. So, so I just wanna make sure, aside from the food and. So, so I just want to make sure, aside from the food, and physically, people will be there. So it was Sunday, Monday. What they said was, if it was two days, Sunday and Wednesday, I think is their, their recommendation. We're recommending Sunday and Monday.
Okay, so I think.
Aside from, I understand that was their recommendation. Our recommendation is Sunday and Monday.
So that's, that's staff's recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Counsel is to decide what.
It's a.
Nation to go with.
It's operations, but you.
Operations.
It's operations.
No, no, I, I want to, I want to hear the feedback.
It has to do with this budget.
It's possible.
I mean, it's front facing.
That's, that's a thin line.
No, I know, I know. That, that's what I was partly teasing, I'm sorry.
I will tell you, Noll.
The points, the point about being closed two days in a row is, is well taken.
So some of Noll's feedback is that that gives the staff the break they need
Yeah.
for this to be beneficial to their mental health, right? Because of the tolls, and having that's, you know, that was her, that was her comfort. We went through a hundred scenarios. Um, I can promise you over two days, Noll and I reworked that schedule about one hundred times to try to find a way to get, to get the most benefit, but also get the best benefit for the animals.
So, so let me say this. One of the big points that made, that she brought up was, uh, reclamation. You're going to have people there anyway.
Eight twelve.
So, so if there is somebody that needs to, um, to reclaim their animal, then we, we could, we could come up with a special call-in number or something, some way or another, to notify staff, so that they can, they can say, hey, I can meet you at ten, let them come in and do that part of it. What it won't do is help with adoptions, because we're not gonna just open the doors on that day, but we can, we can certainly help with reclamation.
And a point that they made when we talked with them yesterday was that, in, in terms of adoptions, um, people often, they want to come with their families, they want to bring the kids. Kids are in school during the week, so if there's some way to either be open later, or, and, and even six is not really late enough sometimes with parents working in Dallas or whatever. Um, or, you know, she said even just a very small window on the, on Sunday, that would be like, two hours would be helpful.
We are open on Saturday. We are open on Saturday. We are not open on Saturday.
So.
Well, I said, keep it like this.
So. That defeats the, kind of the benefit you're trying to give towards the employees that are two days off.
Yeah. So, uh, with the plan proposed in the budget, it would be, uh, that they would work an extra hour, right? So they would close at six.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
They close at six. And then we would allow reclamation on Monday.
I think we could, we could work that in. That's, that's not, we weren't thinking of it in that perspective, and I don't think they're so, so overwhelming. We could not work that into the schedule.
And also, officers, animal control officers are on call if PD needs something. So if, if there is a rescue and PD needs assistance, I know that's one of the things that came up is, in one of the emails, sometimes PD, there are, my understanding, Dale, there are animal control officers on call that can be called out twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, if needed. But it's just an on-call basis, correct?
Yes, if there's an animal bite or some other issue, there is someone who's on call.
So, another point that was brought up is, um, I don't know, this may not be a, this may be a back, uh, a conversation to have with you at another time. It was regarding another question.
Yeah, that's not both of you.
We'll talk about.
So out of everything she brought up in our discussions tonight, I think the only thing that is not resolved by this schedule is the possibility of people wanting to either have additional hours on Sunday, which we don't have at all, or by closing on Monday, they don't have an opportunity to adopt an animal, is the only conversation that's still, because I think we can handle the reclamation. We're still gonna have the on-call service for when we have to go out regardless of the day, and we schedule people to be on call. And then the food, the animal food. So, I mean, I think that's the only thing.
So how about this? How about we go with that plan, and then mid-year goes, that we see if there's any issues with that? If we see.
We are gonna come back in six months and report anyway.
We, if we, if we hear concerns, and, and those things, you know, those concerns for us are happening.
And if we can talk about the other issues that aren't budget issues, you know, that would help too.
Well, right, what rises to the level of contacting an on-call animal control officer, so specifically if there's a bite, or, because one of the things that was mentioned is we take in an animal that we find loose, and we're told by PD, just keep it till the shelter's open, and then we drop it off.
That's not been my experience. Typically, the officer, unless we're completely slammed with priority calls, typically the officer will take that animal, bring it over, there's usually some outdoor pen, you can put him in. And when weather's been inclement, we even called and, and somebody from the animal control's come in to open up and let us get that animal inside. I personally brought litters of puppies that had been dumped on a freezing cold night. If somebody came and opened the shelter door and took it in.
And that would be our on-call person. We should still be able to do that, is my point. Sometimes, sometimes the police department knows in the middle of it. What I'm saying is, if, if we have a weekend incident or whatever, uh, we call the on-call, call person. It still may take them a little while to get there. And, um, and so PD may already be on the call, and, and dealing with the issue at the time. Uh, they would be on call for a violent animal. And, um, so, I mean, that's just.
Bites, abuse cases. I know they go out for abuse cases on call. Bites, they go out on call.
But, you know, I'm not gonna say there's never been a case where, when it was good, and somebody had an animal contained in their backyard for no other reason than it was a spray. Okay, maybe we'll say, hey, contact animal services tomorrow, you know, yeah. That, that's a logical thing to do, but we're also trying to do the best thing for the citizen and the animal.
Sure. So do, do we have the answer yet? I'm sorry.
Yes, we do. Um, what is our new, what would be our new tax rate?
Would be six eight one, six six oh.
What is the rate reduction for?
Is, uh, six point three, six point three pennies.
Instead of six point nine, it's six point three.
Well, but what was scenario A, which was, which.
I think we include the whole three hundred fifty-nine thousand.
Yes, to cover everything that's on there.
I can.
So if we, we could, if you want us to take off the fence and the score, then, uh, take off that hundred and sixty, then we can calculate.
I just, uh, um, trying to remember the, uh.
Yes, those were the.
Six point. Trying to remember what their rate reduction was with, with the, I just wanted to know.
Without anything on this.
No, without the, the, uh, the fence and the score. Trying to remember what that rate reduction was. We had it.
I can, I can approximate it.
Six point six.
Yeah, I'll tell you what.
That was six point.
It's one sign?
That'd have been six point nine.
Well, each six.
Six point five.
Point one oh is worth.
Yeah, we have everything.
The net is less than.
Yeah, most of them lose each other.
Shows two items.
Well.
Oh, this is. Oh.
So.
Add point three to that, and that would give him what it would have been otherwise attractive.
I think it's six point five.
Half. Without the one sixty, so? It runs a tenth, tenth of a cent per hundred.
Mayor, your, the, the, the net total of all those, like, three fifty-nine, half of that roughly is one sixty. So it's equivalent to just below point three cents. So, um, so if we were to subtract those, we only need to cover two hundred, and then that's roughly half of where we were at.
Six seven eight.
Six. So if we're not trying to get to six digits, then it's about point three cents. So point six we need for all of it, or point three without those two items?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that's what you got to. See, it's right.
I'm in favor of the two items.
For the what?
They need the cents.
Okay, so that's scenario B. Are we ready to go around the room and say we're supporting the scenario, or do we have any more add-ons, questions, concerns before we do that?
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm in favor of scenario B.
Put you all of it on the list.
Which is, yeah, the six point three cents rate reduction, so.
Would it be, would it be beneficial, just because we've had a lot of conversations, have Wendy, who's got it on a spreadsheet, run through what's in each of the scenarios, and then go around the room? Kind of, Mike was on.
Well, basically, I mean, what's, what's in scenario A? Is everything except the fence and the score?
Yeah, you can read.
Or, or scenario A is actually, actually scenario A is keep it at the same and take everything on that list off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Minus maybe the animal food.
So then I guess.
Si- a scenario B is everything on that list minus the score and the fence, and then scenario C is.
I'm in support of scenario C.
Do you want?
B is what tax rate? The B would be minus, um, minus.
That makes sense.
That is in addition.
That would be point.
First column there, the one time.
Six seven eight, six six seven.
The FEMA money's the second column.
Yes.
Third column is the additional, it's two ongoing expenses.
Yeah, that's the rule.
And then, of course, that's.
So that's minus the fence and the score.
The B was recently added was the.
I'm in favor of either.
Score, money, kind of a light.
I mean, if I was gonna prefer it, it's C, but I can.
Right there.
C is the thing.
So, yeah, Dan would say she would be a patient as option B. Your C.
So you don't want to cut.
Dan, what do you say to the fence?
I, I thought we previously talked about the fence and saying it was, it was an absolute necessity.
If you could cut something else.
That was in, uh, did one of our July meetings when we talked about the fence.
Yeah.
And I mean.
There was general consensus that, hey, it's gotta be done. Cause I think I asked the question, and I was told, yeah, it's pretty bad shape, it's gotta be fixed.
It's a bad shape.
The, the issue with the fence, it's not just that it's in bad shape, it is a state law that we have a fence there. It protects the bull and it keeps people out. So what's currently happening is, it is rusting, and our guys are going and welding rebar to the bottom lip, so people can't climb under it, right? So, but it's a state law.
Twisted is somehow or another, it didn't make it in, so.
Yeah, absolutely, it didn't make it. But just so you know, it's not just that it's a fence. That's why the fence was so important back in July. It did not make this list, but.
It's gonna, it's gonna have to get paid for eventually, otherwise it's gonna continue to get welded and.
Yeah, I wasn't tracking it. It was so important.
And, and the photos that we saw was literally that is disentiring.
It's not, so I don't want the fence. I'll, give me the line item budget, I'll find a hundred thousand dollars to cut, so we can cut the fence.
Okay, my point is, I'm thinking about the public. What if, what if one of my kids get hurt? You never know about a child.
You don't just convince me about the fence.
No, I'm not trying to convince you. I'm just making this statement for everybody here.
I want the fence. I want to cut other things.
Like I said.
I want to stay at the point six seven eight six, whatever.
Do you have a proposal on what you want to cut?
There, I do think that would be unfruitful. What I would say is, if, if the council's consensus was, fine the hundred thousand, I'll find something to cut.
Well, there you go, then I don't have to do the work.
Yeah, I think you go around the room.
If you cut something I don't want you to cut.
I think you go around the room and find out.
I mean, you go around the room and get the consensus.
So I'm scenario C, but I, I, I can live with scenario B.
Can I?
Brian?
Brian, can I, um, understand under scenario C, what amount of our increment would remain for use next year?
Yeah, so we have two point four cents, so we just, we're, under option C, we're using point six.
So one point eight.
Yeah, so about one point eight we carry in the next year.
I got one or three quarters.
Because we're doing this with horseshoes, just give me the option of saying the point one, at least of a tenth of a percent, just for rounding.
Yeah, that's wrong.
For timing errors.
But about one point eight we would carry in.
And you'd get about two point one with option B.
So I'm C, can live with B, Brian.
I'm in the same vote as you, man.
C can live with.
You gotta make a vote.
You're B.
C.
Boy, that wet zone fence really needs to be replaced.
You'll find them on.
I'll go with B then.
Okay.
C.
C?
C.
Okay, then, come to us with the proposed budget of C.
Yes, it's a public address.
And then, at that time, if we have objections to it, then we'll have to state that on the, on the, during the public meeting portion, when we vote on it. Okay. And then when we, when will y'all send us the budget document?
So, September sixth, uh, what is, that we're doing on the sixth? I know we vote on the year twenty-first, but is that the public hearing?
The twentieth is public hearing, twentieth is public hearing.
What is on the sixth? Was it sixth?
It's a regular Monday.
It's the twentieth.
Okay, that is on the sixth. So on the twentieth, we have the public hearing, twenty-first, you adopt.
Okay. When do we get our hands on it?
An hour's flight.
That we vote on.
With, um, give us a few days, maybe do this week to, to pull it all together and do all the analysis, and then we'll email that to you guys by next Monday at least.
Okay, good. I just don't want to wait till we get seventy-two hours in advance on the twentieth, and then we have a surprise budget.
We'll send you all, all the decision points that we made over the, the two days that we've done this.
And can we get an update of that spreadsheet we were just looking at, so we understand what we just agreed to?
That, that's a problem, yeah. We'll send all that to you guys. Here's the reason why. We, we were trying to do some of this with, by just estimating. I want her to actually be able to plug it into the model.
Yeah.
And, and, and tighten it up. Well, that's why we're saying if we could just set rounding by point one, then, then I think we're close enough for what we were trying to do. But let's give her a chance to get to the penny roughly, and then when we have that, then we'll, we'll send that out to you guys later this week, or at least by Monday at the latest.
Okay.
All right, can we just really quickly summarize for the public's knowledge that might be watching this tomorrow, what we've added into the budget here and why? Because when we look at what we did versus what Brian proposed, it's, it's a higher tax rate, and I think we're gonna be called to task to justify that. So this is four additional police officers above and beyond what was proposed in the budget. This is providing animal, animal food for our shelter, which was not previously, uh, budgeted for at any substantial level, right? Twenty-five thousand dollars versus the twenty-five hundred dollars that was budgeted for twenty-twenty-two. This is the addition of a Nox key secure system for our fire department, which will allow better key control on fire trucks, if I'm correct. Uh, it fulfills many of our boards and commissions' requests, as well as re- re-implements the fifty-fifty sidewalk share program with our residents at fifty thousand dollars, which, um, more equitably balances how we do that sidewalk share program. Uh, it changes out or does maintenance on our highway sixty-six median, which is desperately in need of repair. Um, ensures that we cover any ARPA shortfall from the one-time expenses as it relates to our police officer equipment. Uh, it adds, um, uh, for the senior citizens of Rallup group, a counseling program, or something of that nature in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. And we would be able to replace the wet zone fence, which was badly rusted, very hazardous to our youth in the community. Um, so that's, I think, a summary of everything, if I'm not mistaken. Unless, is there something else there?
You started off that we are adding four more.
Yeah, four, in addition to the four that you added, for a total of eight.
Or options. When I think the other piece of it is it preserves the five hundred thousand out of ARPA for a cost overruns. That's a very important distinction, too.
Very, very good point. I, I've got to say that this is, this is not frivolous. This is, uh, one of the best budgets that we have put together, I think, in, in, in my five years. Uh, we're accomplishing a lot of, of desperate needs, um, and we have, we have the ability to do that. Typically, most times, we are having to recognize that there are some substantial needs that we're just not gonna be able to get to. And I feel really comfortable with where we're at with this, uh, proposal, that, um, yeah, we still have a lot of needs, but we're getting a lot of the really important ones knocked out in this budget. Uh, so it, it's gonna feel good to leave here tonight with a, with a solid plan that we can improve, uh, increase community safety, and so, yeah, good job, y'all.
I feel so very good about this, in particular, the additional four officers, so I'm just, I'm thrilled about that. Thank you, counsel. Thank you so much.
Is that it?
I think that's it, mayor.
All right, we are adjourned at seven forty-seven PM.